Call this meeting to order. All right, roll call please. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Lamson.
Here.
Oh, is there any public comment before we adjourn to close session?
Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to the maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time the item is being considered.
All right, and we, departmental, we have a budget workshop, and I believe Mr. Platsu.
I'll just start us off and introduce Claire Tyson, our finance director, gonna do the bulk of the presentation tonight, but the whole idea behind this is, you know, we have three new council members with a lot of questions on kind of the large picture of the budget process and, you know, what the budget entails. So instead of doing this three times, we thought we would do it with the council, and thank you for having, you know, the special workshop before your meeting this evening. I think it's gonna be the first of probably a few more workshops to kind of drill into, you know, our budget and kind of that big picture. So tonight is just a big overview, trying to get that understanding, if there are areas that we want to kind of drill into and look at a little bit more than, you know, let's talk about that, and then, you know, we might need to schedule future workshops to do that. I'm gonna turn it over to Claire. Thank you, Claire.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Lamson, council members. Tonight, we're gonna look at the financial overview. As, as the city manager said, this is kind of a starting point. Each one of you come to your job here with certain knowledge and experiences that are going to be useful in this, in your decision-making process. This is going to add a layer on to that, to kind of get everything into kind of a baseline. So we're gonna go over things like terminology, we're gonna go over things like what tools we use. We're gonna go over different concepts all around the financial matters and what will be upcoming for you for decisions, in the strategic planning, in the budget cycle, all of those things. So after this presentation, I would encourage you to go back and take a look at the budget, take a look at the CAFR, take a look at any of those materials on the website that might benefit you in your, in your base knowledge, taking these concepts together with them. So let's get started. How does this work? Hold on. It's technical. Oh, look at that. All right. So here's what we're gonna cover today. We're gonna talk a little bit about government finances, we're gonna talk about fund accounting, which is terminology you'll hear a lot in government accounting, we're gonna talk about the general fund revenues and expenditures, parks and rec revenue and expenditures, because they're critical to this process, utility funds. We're gonna talk a little bit about cost allocation, financial challenges that we are facing, long-term financial plan, and financial planning next steps. What we're not gonna talk about is, we're not gonna get into a lot of details in the financials, we're not gonna talk about transactions, we're actually not gonna talk about the details of the budget. So we won't talk specifically about dollars, although you're welcome to ask any questions, obviously. Let's see. Uh-oh. One at a time? Oh, look at that. I can do that. So, so unlike a business, the focus is not the bottom-line profit. So on a business, your focus for financials is, is the bottom line. What you can do in the operation drives your revenue. That is not the case with government. So with government, your revenue is really already determined for you. You may have some control over it, you may be able to impact it, but that impact comes years after an action you take. And then there are so many regulations or different authorities that, that contribute to the ability for you to bring that money in, that really it's not about the revenue, it's more about how do you budget for those revenues? So how are you gonna spend those? Revenues can come in a couple of different forms, restricted versus general. Restricted revenues are for specific use, so the use of those monies are restricted by something, and usually it's another government agency, can be a grant, it can be gas tax, Meijer R is one of your restricted revenue sources. The general or unrestricted are things used basically for city services, so examples, property tax, sales tax, those are unrestricted or general. Expenditures, usually they're either regulated, mandated, or discretionary. So regulated, that's directly connected to the restricted revenue, so the, the agency that's giving you the source of funds is, is basically telling you what you can and cannot spend those expenditures on. Restricted uses have to do usually with grant funding, legal mandates, they can't be accounting, like there are certain things where required to record in the books. Then discretionary, not, let me, let me double back, nondiscretionary expenditures may include things that the council has approved. So for a department, they will have nondiscretionary expenditures that are connected to what has been approved by council. Council approved that salaries and benefits are gonna be at these rates, which means that a department, that's not considered a discretionary any longer, because there's, there's decisions that have already been made around those dollars. So discretionary funds for a department become very small, they're really the cost of operating, and can you spend that money to get this service over here, or does it move over there? It's, it's not a lot. Equipment replacements, special projects, those are, those are discretionary for a department. Balanced budget, revenues equal to or greater than expenses, that's a goal, that's, that's what we're striving for, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Fund balanced reserves, they can be restricted, committed, or unassigned. Restricted means that there's something outside of this agency that restricted it. Grant's a great example. There are other examples that we could look at. Committed means that you, the council, has made a decision that we're gonna spend those monies in a particular way on the reserve. Our, our reserve for the discretionary, or the economic uncertainty, budget stability, that reserve is a committed reserve. The council has approved through their reserve policy. Unassigned means it's available. Available is kind of something we might wanna talk a little bit more about, but it does include things like encumbrances, we have a commitment to a contract that's incorporated We, we are managed by something called the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, so this comes up from time to time. You'll hear in your business, your accounting group has to follow GAAP, a generally accepted accounting principle, so do we, but that gets applied at the end in your CAFR, and we have to follow government standards throughout the year. So some guiding principles. Taxpayer dollars need to be used prudently, and, and the message here is, there's never enough dollars, it's always scarce resources, it's not that you have all the money you want to be able to do all the things you need to do. So we just always walk in going scarce resources. The resources we do have are to provide services that benefit many citizens, not just a few, because you don't have enough to make, to make it spread to just the few. We represent the, the many. Try to budget wisely, it's easier said than done, and don't overspend the budget. And when we look at the budget, we look at it in different categories, so we do have the ability to move budget around, but within a fund, within certain kinds of high-level categories, and we'll talk more about that when we do the budget development. Establish a strong fiscal foundation, including adequate resources, really important, the, the adequate reserves, very, very important, especially, we've learned this lesson just a few years ago, the city of Galt did pretty well with their reserves, whereas other cities did not, and they didn't have the reserves to weather the storm. So there's a lot of focus right now in, in my industry statewide about adequate reserves. Plan for the long term to maintain fiscal stability. In other words, there are things that'll happen, decisions that may be made now that impact us two, three, four years down the road, and so we need to be prepared for that and be watching that. Ongoing costs should not exceed ongoing revenues. So let me kind of go into what ongoing costs are. Ongoing are things like salaries, benefits, something that you're gonna spend every year, you make a commitment towards, and you, and you spend that money. That needs to be tied to ongoing revenues. So if your revenues are such that, you know there's some volatility in it, maybe I'm only gonna get that revenue once every three years, you wouldn't wanna spend that on something that has an annual cost. So we try to incorporate those concepts when we're looking at the budget. There are a few exceptions, and the exceptions are sometimes you will wanna budget costs that are one-time, excuse me, over and above your ongoing revenues, because you've intentionally saved that money for that in your reserves, for whatever that project is. Encumbrances is a term you'll hear a lot in government, it has to do with, if I have a contract or an obligation that has been approved, usually by council, but also by the purchasing policy, we actually encumber the funds, which means we set aside those monies in the budget to say, I've already made a commitment against that. And the intention of that, and we do it internally within our financial system, so that we can actually see that that money's really gone, and the reason why we do that is so that we don't double-spend money. So you hear that term from time to time. Policy decisions drive the budget and the operations. So the decisions that are made here and other policies that, that are generated from this council, that actually drives the budget. So we can't really move forward on budget until we have certain kinds of decisions. Some of those carry over year over year, like MOUs. I know based on what has already been approved, when did we do the MOUs, two years, two years ago, what next year's budget's gonna look like, because that MOU has already been approved. There are other things that we'll need council direction on. One of the big things is the strategic plan, that's really the core direction for us developing the budget, and I know you have sessions coming up later this month, we'll need input from those to be able to help guide that budget process. There's a reserve policy the city of Galt has, which is fabulous, Economic Stability Reserve it's called, which is 25% of general fund and Parks and Rec Fund operating expenditures. We have that amount set aside, we'll take a look at the reserves in a minute. We also have in that policy, assigned accrued leave, it's 20%, 20% of the total general fund accrued leave, we set that aside every year, and what that's saying is, we're anticipating that 20% of that will be spent in the next year, so we're setting it aside. And then any council resolution-approved items, such as capital projects or anything else, will go into that budget process. And then it's important to report and audit financial outcomes. We do an external independent audit annually, you'll see reports, financial reports periodically through the year. Those reports that are throughout the year will be a comparison of budget to actual. And the whole idea is that the budget is your measuring tool, that's what you're always going back to and saying, did I, did I live within my means, basically, did I, did I stick to my budget? I do have things adding in. So, fund accounting, let me talk briefly about this. Basically what governments do is they separate revenues and expenses that are, that are associated with each other into what we call funds, and funds are set up for separate activities, kind of like a business. If you have multiple businesses, you set each ledger up separately, it's kind of the same concept. They're categorized into three types, general fund, which is kind of self-explanatory, it's really the general services of the city. Special revenue funds, we'll talk a little bit more about those, and then enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are the ones that behave most like a business. There's eight sub-groupings, so in governmental funds, there's a general fund, special revenue, debt service, capital projects. Proprietary funds include enterprise funds, that's your water fund, your storm water, those kinds of funds. Internal service funds, which we don't have, private purpose funds, agency funds. Your agency fund is successor agency to the redevelopment. And here's some examples. So special revenue, we talked about Meijer R, gas tax, the L and L's are in this category, the firing range, CIP impact fees, and grants, they're all made up into special revenue. Parks and Rec Fund is really a hybrid, it includes restricted revenues based on AB 3773, and some of the revenue is not restricted, because it covers the entire operation of Parks and Rec. Enterprise funds are the utilities. So I added in here some slides that some of you may have seen before. This is from the budget, the last budget cycle, and what it really tells you is, where does money come from? So in our operation, we've got all these funds coming in, where, where are they coming from? And the majority of our funding is coming from property tax at 46%, sales tax is a big hitter with 23%, other taxes, and then a variety of smaller revenue sources. The interesting thing here is that nearly two-thirds of this revenue is coming from property taxes and sales tax. Where does money go? Well, our biggest service to the community is our police, our safety services, 46%, and then a variety of others in here, you see, you know, well, library doesn't even register, but events, community development, 6%, public works, 13%. So this is where we're spending our money. This slide is really just general fund, but it, it's, it's a better depiction of how those expenditures are categorized. Most of it is personnel cost, that's salaries and benefits, it's, to provide a service to the community, it costs, its people are providing that service, so that's 72%. There's operations and maintenance of 22%, that's to keep everything moving, and then capital and equipment improvements are a small 6%. That's really kind of a sad, small 6%. Someday, I'd love to see that higher, I'm sure we all would. Ten-year comparison of general fund. So I wanted to put this in here, not so much to talk about the numbers, because they're a little hard to read, but more to talk about a pattern that we see. What this is showing you is, the darker blue line is the revenues, and the lighter blue line is the, in mine, it's almost a gray. line is the, in mine, it's almost a gray, is the expenditures. So when you look back at 08, 09, I guess the first year on this, what it shows you is that the expenditure exceeded the revenues. That always makes me nervous, but I wasn't here to know what that budget included. It may have had one-time costs in there for some kind of equipment that was very intentional, that had been saved up in the reserve and spent. It doesn't mean that the budget was overspent. It just means that your expenditures were higher than your revenues for those years. And then it kind of flattens out and starts a normal pattern. And your normal pattern is that your revenues are usually equal to, or a little bit more than what you're spending. And so the city did a pretty good job through the recession of holding really tight to their expenditures. And then about 2016, 17, it started to shift the other way. 2017, 18, that number is budget, and so I'm sure that it includes intentional spending, one-time spending in that. But it is something that we in the finance office will watch very closely, and we'll bring that back to council if we see a deterioration of fund balance, is basically what that's going to equate to. I know we're interested in Parks and Rec, so I wanted to bring the same kind of illustration here. The addition on the Parks and Rec is really, the red line tells you what the contribution from the city is for the Parks and Rec operation. So as you know, most of the revenue is coming from the Galt market. The green shows the expenditures, and then the red shows what the general fund is helping to contribute to make it whole. It does appear that the red will continue, that there will be a commitment or consideration by this council for a commitment to continue to fund those operations. But that pattern seems to be pretty solidly marked to continue. This slide, I tried to do a little bit of a comparison to numbers and something graphic. This is really what you've seen before. At the end of 2017, these are the audited numbers for your general fund balance. So the general fund balance had, and these are in thousands of dollars, had 149 in non-spendable. Non-spendable is really prepaid's in inventory. It's not really cash to spend. The economic stability is 4.338. That was based on the policy approved. Parks and Rec contribution is listed there at 1.3, and then unassigned, 4.4. So the 4.4 becomes the decision points. If there are, it's called unassigned, some people call it unavailable, or available. But it's something we will look at going forward to try and maintain some measure in that. I did want to mention that we know that we're doing more and more deferred maintenance, which means that we may have budgeted for something, then we're holding on, which means that that unassigned may grow over time. Eventually, it's just deferring the problem, though. So, cost allocation plan. I wanted to go over this just because I know it's something that just changed, just changed last year. And I want to make sure that if there's any questions on this, or if I can add any value here, I can. So a cost allocation plan is an industry standard. It's a normal piece of the budgeting tool. And really, the objective of that is to calculate the full cost of certain kinds of activities. So let me go back to the enterprise funds we talked about, water, storm water, those. Those act like a business, so you're supposed to have the full cost of what it costs you to operate that, which means cost allocation is part of that, paying the bills, collecting the money, moving any decisions along, all of those things, the attorney, HR, hiring people, all of that is part of what's made up of the cost allocation plan. And we are actually supposed to be charging for those kinds of things into other funds, particularly those that are self-sufficient. We also have an obligation to charge some of that, usually it's limited, to grants and certain kinds of funds. So it's kind of an industry standard. I guess the City of Galt has done a cost allocation plan for forever. But last year, we changed that model. And what we did was, we took a look at how that was being derived. And we can spend, I could spend a whole evening on just this topic, and we could do that. But really, what you're trying to do is determine what costs apply. These are central services costs, the cost of HR, the cost of finance, the cost of administration. What costs do apply that you cannot charge directly? In other words, I don't know how much my time I spend on the water fund. I mean, I could make a wild guess, but that's what it would be. Or I can go in and have a matrix that determines, based on something I do, how would that be charged out? A really good example is accounts payable. We have an accounts payable group, they pay the bills. So their time is going to be charged out. The way that, how much each one of the departments gets charged, or each one of the funds, more appropriately, gets charged, is based on how many bills are paid. It's a logical basis. So the new cost allocation plan uses things like square footage of who resides in a building, uses things like how many accounts payable items, the invoice is paid, uses things like, how many computers are you using in that area? And those are the tools, the basis for the cost to be allocated. So we can talk about the central service departments, they're basically charging to the operating departments. There's direct costs, that if I know exactly what I'm spending on that, I can direct-charge it. But that's not what a cost allocation plan is really doing. It's doing all the indirect costs. Once you get all of that calculated, then as a government agency, you don't actually charge all the departments, because they may be within the same fund. As an example, police. I can tell you based on the calculation what it costs the city to do that central services for police, but I'm not going to charge it to them, because it's all general fund. It doesn't, it's like taking the money out of this pocket and putting it in this pocket. It doesn't make any sense. So, but there are things that do need to have a cost allocation applied to them. I could go into more detail on this, but I think I'm going to move on unless we have any questions. Okay, we're good? You're still awake? Guys good? Okay. All right. So now, let's talk about financial challenges. I think one of the most talked-about areas right now of financial challenges for all municipalities is CalPERS. CalPERS is the retirement system for the employees. The employees have been paying into their own system for a long time. This system, the best way to explain this is, it's a defined benefit, which means that it's determined how much you will receive based on actuaries. If I retire at 55, I'm expected to live 30 more years, that's what it's going to cost. And there's a lot of math that goes in behind it. When our CalPERS agency is determining how much money they need to set aside to be able to fund all of the retirees, they, I would say, industry-wide, whether it's government or private, nobody ever set aside those dollars, going back, I don't know, 20, 30 years. Until Enron came around, people were not, companies, government, were not setting aside the dollars. Then the government and the agencies, the accounting agencies, came in and said, whoa, 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 you can't do this, you need to set aside the dollars. So we started doing that. So we have contributions that we're recording, even though we're not paying the money, because we're trying to true that up over the course of 30 years, I think it is, 30-year plan. I think we're well into the 30 years. Now, when you look at CalPERS, they're getting money from the agencies, the municipalities. So we're helping cover our pensions for our employees. The employees are contributing in. And the third piece of the pie is, they're taking all those funds and they're investing them. And when they're investing them, they're anticipating a certain return. To the extent one of those three doesn't fill its bill, one of the other two gets to pick it up. Generally, it's not the employee, just saying, although their rates have gone up too. It's generally going to be the municipalities. So the idea of the discount rate is, the discount rate to CalPERS means, here's how much I think our investments are going to earn. When they're off the mark, then they lower that rate so that there's more coming into them from us. We know this is a dynamic that hit CalPERS and all of the other pension funds. And we know what it's going to cost us in the next, from 18, 19 to 22, 23. And by the way, I highly simplified that explanation. There's a lot of details behind that. And it's going to be a big expense, and we're going to need to cover the cost. And there's creative ways we can do that, but at the end of the day, we have to cover the cost. So that's one of our biggest financial challenges, and all municipalities are dealing with it. The other thing is, we have some deferred maintenance and deferred equipment items. These numbers are coming from the last budget cycle. We'll be looking at these numbers again in the next budget cycle. They may be higher. We know that we just deferred two years' worth of repairs and improvements, or a part of two years. So these numbers will likely be higher in the next budget process. Eventually, you have to pay the bill. Eventually, the car breaks down, or the roof leaks, or whatever it is. So we will have to look at this. We'll be looking at some more details in this when it comes forward, probably through the capital improvement plan, but also through some other mechanisms. I know this council talked about internal service funds, creating those. That's a great way to address some of these problems. It's basically, you save up, so that when you have to replace it, you have the money to do so. We don't have internal service funds. We've been doing what they call pay-as-you-go. So if I have 10 vehicles, and I know they're going to each last five years, then I'm going to replace two a year, and I should have that in my budget. Because of some hard budget times, we don't even have that in the budget. So again, we keep deferring these costs. So that's going to be a big problem eventually. I don't know what to say about this one, because this is so real, it's scary. Increasing regulations and deliverables without additional resources to fund employee and operations costs. So what that means is that our governing agencies may come in and say something as simple as, you need to have an attorney at each one of these kinds of events from now on. They don't give you any money for that. Or they give you gas tax money for a road, but they don't give you enough for that road. You have to figure out the difference. There's a lot of that coming down the pipe right now, and that's, the scary part about that is, you don't know what the answer is. You don't know what they are. The services to the community are costing more than the service revenue sources. We see that already, and that will come before you also. I don't know why those came out in different areas. Minimum wage. Minimum wage is going up a dollar per year for the next, until 2022, when it's going to hit $15 an hour. So how do you pay for that? Whether it's your hourly employees, which is mostly in Parks and Rec, or the compaction to other positions. I've got these all out of balance, out of, lighting and landscape districts, insufficient revenue to fund maintenance. This is one of our current problems we're starting to address. How do we fund the maintenance when we should have a revenue source for that, and it's not enough? And then the whole structural imbalance, we need to be watching that, ongoing revenues less than ongoing costs. And you'll hear more about this through some of the budget workshops and the proposed budget. We'll want to be very careful that when we spend one-time, that when we spend ongoing revenues on one-time costs, or one-time reserves on one-time costs, that we're equating the two together, that we're not overspending those revenues. Oh, and minimum fund balance reserves. We'll be keeping a close eye on the policy as it exists, and we may be re-looking at that, depending on what your pleasure is. And then my favorite, which is again, the unknown. When will we have the next recession? How deep will it hit? Do we have enough reserves to weather it? How long will it last? I'm full of joy. So, how we'll try and address this is partially through a long-term financial plan. And let me talk a little bit about that. The long-term financial plan, which is being incorporated into a lot of municipalities recently, and I know the city has looked at it, we're looking at it quite a bit right now. The purpose of it really is, it's a financial modeling tool. So it's a tool for decision-making. It's supposed to be able to project forward. So it projects impacts of anticipated mandates and decisions, so decisions we make. What does that do to the operation over time? What does that do to your finances over time? This long-term plan will be a general fund focus, because at the end of the day, if anything else overruns, general fund is, has the obligation to basically fill the gap. It is a living document, which means that, it changes all the time. So it's not a document that will give to you and say, this is good for a year. That's not the case. Every time a decision is made, it will change that. Every time, whether it's internal to the city or external, any kind of a mandate will change that. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the assumptions, and we'll go over this in more detail when we look at the long-range plan itself. But what we do is, we take certain kinds of revenue, and we figure out, if I know what it is today, and I have a good trend to evaluate what it's going to be in the future, then do I escalate it by a percentage, potentially? Salaries and benefits might be a specific amount, like if an incentive were approved, maybe it's a specific amount, not a percentage. And then, of course, the overruns of lighting district and others. These are all examples of things, these are not, this is not an all-inclusive list of assumptions, but these are the kind of assumptions. Some of them will be percentage-driven, some will be a fixed amount, others may be, I know the amount of that overrun, so I'm going to incorporate it in. Some of the examples of revenues that we know that council has approved that will be impacting this fund, will also include things like the rifle range contract. We know when those revenues are going to start coming in, things having to do with housing starts. We know when some of that will be coming in. So those things will be incorporated in. Permit fees, trying to think of all the different things that we mix in there. The billboard, if that gets approved, that'll become part of the revenue source, and that'll, that will be included in. Oh, and hopefully, internet sales. That'll be coming soon, and that'll help our sales tax model. So expenditures, obviously the MOUs, and then the increasing costs. So that minimum wage I just talked about, it's hitting us, it's hitting everybody else. So all of our operating costs are going up. Everybody we're working with, they're raising their rates too, because their employee costs just went up. And the guy they buy their supplies from, costs went up. And so all of our operating costs are expected to start rising at a like measure over time. We're putting together a long-term plan that'll span six years. We'll have that ready for you very soon. And as I said, it changes. It'll change frequently. It'll change frequently. There's a lot of detail that goes in behind it. It's definitely a math model. But it'll become a very useful tool for you and for us to determine what is the real cost of doing business. Now, I have no idea why I did that. Budget development. So, I wanted to talk just briefly about this. We talked about how important the budget is to this entire process. Right now, you're in the middle of a two-year budget, which means that we'll be doing a mid-year review. What that means is that it's a different kind of process. Because we do a two-year budgeting, we're really doing kind of a refresh of what that looks like. What has happened in the last year that we know these numbers now are different? And where are those impacts? And then we'll be bringing that back to you. The evaluation, though, is not small. The underlying theme of the budget is really the strategic planning, which starts everything. The city manager is responsible for the budget per your municipal code, and he basically works with the departments to develop operating budgets in alignment with the operations and the strategic plan. Finance owns the process. We don't make decisions, we just own the process. So, we make sure all the pieces happen. We start with looking at revenues. As we said, you don't really know what the rules of the game are until you know what your revenues are. So, we'll start by looking at property tax and sales tax. Those are your big hitters. County provides some data. We have trends. We also have an expert consultant, expert in the state of California, and I think beyond, but provides a great deal of detail. And then we'll come up with what those increases may look like. Hopefully, they're all increases. We'll add in user fees, other charges for services like rec events, grants, licenses, everything we can think of to evaluate the revenue. Once we know what the revenue is, we'll start with expenditures, and we'll look at the ongoing expenditures. So, start with personnel. We use a term called FTE. It really means full-time equivalent. So, I'm a full-time employee, I'm a full-time equivalent, and we'll look at each one of those personnel. As you know, all of those positions, whether they're filled or not, come here. So, we'll budget based on those position approvals. We'll budget based on the benefits that have already been approved through the MOU. Sometimes those benefits are from other agencies, CalPERS. You know, I guess we do social security, so any of those kinds of fees. So, those are part of the ongoing costs. Then we'll look at operating costs. And the departments really have a huge help in this area. They need to help us with the operations. If there's something changing in their mandates, and they know they're going to need a further supplier service, they will provide that information for us. If we can find efficiencies in any of these areas, we're pretty good at that so far. So, those will all be collected and calculated. Then we'll go into one-time. Those are equipment and capital. There's a process called capital improvement plan that will come to you with budget process. That's a five-year look ahead, but it includes the budget for the year we're, the year in play. Those are all one-time costs. Oh, and special projects. So, there will be special projects from time to time. Sometimes they are mandated. My example here is general plan. It's not an annual process, but it costs money for us to do it. And we have to do this once every ten to fifteen years. And that's a good example of a special project that'll show up in the budget. This entire process takes somewhere between four to six months. It's usually closer to six months, because there is so much back and forth between finance sends out, "Here's our list of employees. Do these all relate? Are these all at the correct level?" They come back, we do an evaluation. We may check with personnel to say, "Hey, are there any kind of reclassifications or anything going on that we need to know about?" There's always this back and forth work that's being done between finance sending out information, departments supplying information. And then all of that gets reviewed by the city manager. And he may kick it back and say, "I need a further explanation of this," or "There should be efficiencies on that." And so, this is a very collaborative process that takes quite a bit of time. The timelines are that your proposed budget will be to public study session and council in May, with a final budget to council for approval before July first. Now, I believe in our municipal code, we have the ability to continue operating if that approval's not done as of July first. But it's operating on an old budget that may be insufficient. So, it's not advisable. Many agencies don't have a stopgap. They, well, we talked about the federal government, but we won't. So, what I would say about that budget process is you're gonna be seeing more about that, and we're gonna talk about it a little bit here also. So, in order for us to be able to do that, first step is the financial, the strategic plan and goal-setting. Really important to us. We can't really direct, you know, guide the ship without it. We're gonna bring forth a long-term financial plan. That should help a little bit. We'll probably need to look at service levels and evaluate that. Can we afford to provide the service we're providing today? Do we wanna change that service? What can we afford to do? We'll need to review the LLDs and the upcoming CFT assessment districts. We know we're spending more money in these areas than we have revenue, so we really need to look at it and figure out, how do we handle this? How do we pay the bills? We will have a fee schedule coming to you. I believe it's, I wanna say, April. I may be wrong. And that fee schedule dictates any kind of fee changes. A lot of our fees may have a CIP attached to it for an incremental increase, or there may be a study behind it that says, "Hey, you're way out of whack with your fees." So, that'll be coming forward to you also. So, capital improvement plan, which I talked about, then the mid-year budget. We need to evaluate the infrastructure needs. Streets, roads, bridges, storm drains. We really evaluate this every year, but with aging systems, it's very important that we evaluate these. We need to continue to evaluate the equipment needs. Even if we can't afford an ISF today, how do we pay for the replacement of vehicles and computers and all of the equipment that we rely upon to be able to do our jobs? Update and/or refresh the city's financial policies. You'll see some of these coming forward. It's something on my whiteboard, which is full. And we know that there are some areas that we could really be more clear with these policies, but again, they'd have to come to you for direction. Does this make sense, that sort of thing? And then, of course, the budget workshops. One of the things that would be helpful to the finance group is to kind of know from the council what your direction is in regards to the budget workshops. There's a lot of information that I've provided tonight, but it's all kind of just conceptual, theoretical. We know we're going to need to look at each department and how they operate and all of that, but are there pieces in between that we need to focus on for assistance for you, to help you make decisions, and for potentially the public? What are those workshops? What do they need to be? And that's really the end of my presentation. You guys have been very quiet. Do you have questions for me? There's a test, you know, right? Did I tell you there's a test at the end? No?
Go ahead. Claire, so, you came from Stockton when you and I chatted. You told me all your background. So, obviously, you've came from a city that's a lot bigger than Galt. Working in Stockton, which obviously was a huge, you know, with the whole bankruptcy mess of which you said you were part of fixing and all that. So, from your experience, what is a twenty-five percent reserve fund? Would you say is common? Or would you say, "I know you mentioned that it's healthy. I know it's healthy." But would you, what would you say the average municipality is putting away? I've done some research on this. I'm just curious your answer to that.
It's a really great question. I just went to municipal finance. You're going to the league this week, right? So, I went to a municipal finance conference through the league, and they asked basically cities and counties. And they ranged everywhere from sixteen, seventeen percent to fifty percent. I wanna be at the place that has the fifty percent. What I would say is twenty-five percent is probably middle of the road. It doesn't make me overly confident in that it's really one-fourth of your year. So, it's not, in other words, if you, if you didn't have cash, you could continue to operate for X amount of time. That's not a very long time. So, I remember when I was trained on personal finances, we were told, "Always have six months savings for your, to pay your bills." City does not have six months to pay our bills.
We had a presentation last year. I forget the lady that did it, but she basically, her exact words, "We're in very, very good condition."
Really?
Those were her words. Yeah. I was just looking back at it. So, I know that the twenty to twenty-five percent got approved in June of seventeen. That's when we took it from having twenty percent to twenty-five. And I don't think it's a bad thing to have, you know, money set aside. But what I keep circling back to look at, what I keep thinking about is that, you know, it seems like since that time, I tend to hear the same redundant thing where we don't have money for this, we don't have money for that. We're cutting budget this, we can't fix this. We're just kicking the can down the road. But yet, at some point, we thought that we were in good enough financial condition to put an extra five percent away. I was just doing some quick math, and I would assume that we have a thirteen million dollar budget. Is that about, I mean, roundabout? Is that close?
Okay. I believe you.
Okay. So, I mean, it's about eight hundred thousand extra. So, if we were putting twenty, we're putting a five. So, five percent would be by eight hundred thousand. So, since June of seventeen was when it approved, then we would, since that point, would realistically have put away one point two million extra if we had not. So, I'm just saying, it seems like a lot of things we're talking about that are challenges for us, we're trying to figure out, you know, how to rob Peter to pay Paul for use, just as lame as term. But yet, but yet, we're, you know, we're putting, I just, I struggle with that, thinking that we're...
So, let me do a little, you're helping me understand your perspective by adding the math. So, let me put it in this perspective. When the Great Recession happened, property taxes dropped in this area approximately fifty percent. So, if that's close to half of your revenue source, and it drops fifty percent, and that doesn't even include sales tax, which also dropped, and housing markets stopped, so all those permits stopped.
Yeah, I understand that, but...
That could turn the tide really fast.
But you're talking about a recession. You're talking about a huge housing bubble that was like...
That was a huge bubble.
I mean, that was a huge thing. The chance that something like that would happen again, like to that extent? I mean, it could happen, yeah. I mean, it could be worse. But I mean, what I'm saying is, that if, if my wife and I decide that we're doing really well with our finances, and we're gonna start putting a little extra money away because we're fearful that we're gonna lose our jobs, like we could both lose our jobs. That's gonna be a catastrophe. We gotta have that money. And then our cars break down, and we can't fix them, or, you know, we need a roof on our house, and all these things add up. We're not just gonna say, "Oh, we can't touch that money," because, you know, what if we both lose our jobs? That is like for like worst-case scenario money, let's call it. But I mean, we can't just, I mean, I'm just looking at all different, I mean, we have to find money to fix these things somewhere. So, I look at that first. It's like, in hindsight, were we financially set enough to put an extra five percent? Maybe we should have taken that eight hundred thousand, which would now, by my calculation, be one point two million. What could we have done with one point two million? I mean, there's a lot of projects I've seen come across, like, for example, Parks and Rec presentation, there was, you know, a whole slew of things that we needed to fix. I'm thinking that would, could have checked a lot of boxes.
And so, when we bring forward the long-term plan, that reserve is basically one-time money for one-time uses, right? Or for emergencies. When we bring forward that long-term plan, those are questions that we can put into the model. What if we spend X amount here? You know, one-time or ongoing, what does that impact the model? And that'll be a useful tool for you in that regard.
One more last question. I'm gonna let somebody else jump in here. So, you, according to your slide, we have one, we have four point three million unassigned, which is basically available. On your deferred maintenance page, I did some quick math on that, except for the line item that mentioned vehicles needing one to two million of deferred maintenance over the next five years. So, I just kinda split that in half at one point five million, and then divided it by five, and came up with three hundred thousand. So, I take three hundred thousand for one year, and then added up all the other numbers you had. It was like four million dollars. So, I mean, unless I'm missing something, I'm like, if we have four point three unassigned, and I'm looking at a slide that says we need about four million of deferred maintenance to be taken care of, doesn't it seem like we could take care of a lot of the maintenance we need with some of these funds?
Yes. And so, the question is, what's the impact going forward? So, you weren't here at that meeting, but one of the questions that we will be asking is, what about Parks and Rec? What about that continued support? If we commit to that continued support, we know the revenues aren't there in the general fund ongoing for that. So, how do we bolster the general fund in the ongoing side? Or do we fill the hole for three years and then have no money left? And then, what about your deferred maintenance? So, those are all considerations that will be looked at.
Your Parks and Rec graph actually shows revenues looking like they're actually very consistent. Going back, I mean, I was under the impression that our revenue was declining a lot greater, but going back to your graph in two thousand and eight, I don't know if you have that handy, you pull it up, but it looks like, you know, revenue looks pretty level, except for in fifteen, sixteen, where it looked a little higher. And the subsidy that we put in, I don't like to use the word subsidy, but the money that we chip in in seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, and then this year, looked to be pretty consistent, and it actually looked the same as it was back, or similar to eight, oh, eight and nine.
With the cost of operation.
Yeah, right there. So, if you're looking at the blue line, I mean, it looks pretty, you know, it's a little bit of variation there, but it looks pretty consistent. So, I mean, I would be safe to say that our revenue from the Parks Recreation doesn't look like it's really declined dramatically since two thousand and eight, which would be what, eight years, eleven years ago?
The cost of doing operations, of course, have increased, not just in this facility, but in all operations, in your business and all this.
Right, but the revenue doesn't look that much off either. I mean, I'm sorry, the expenditures don't look that much higher than they were back in the very first as well.
Well, I agree with you that ten years ago, yes, the general fund was filling the gap for Parks and Rec. Yes. If the, I mean, yes, they were. So, but it's an ongoing problem, and it continues to deteriorate your reserves. So, how long can you weather that storm?
When you worked in Stockton, did they have a Parks and Rec program there, right?
Yes.
So, you were obviously in finance there. What extent did Stockton contribute to their Parks and Rec program? What percentage of the Parks and Rec budget came from the general fund in that city?
I don't know what the percentage is, but what I would tell you is that they did not have another funding source. They did not have a three-seven-seven-three obligation. So, they didn't have that funding source. They didn't develop their Parks and Rec the way that this city has done. The citizens don't use the parks. They drive to Galt to use your pool.
You're saying that Galt has a better Parks and Rec program than Stockton?
Absolutely. Did I say that out loud? Yes. And I would say that because, and Stockton's just an illustration of many cities. They're closing their pools. They can't afford to maintain them. You've got an excellent pool here that people flock to. There are other facilities here that are really stellar, whereas other cities can't afford to maintain them. So, is it a percentage of their general fund or their operations? Absolutely. I don't know what that percentage is, and it does vary per community.
I mean, my, I just feel like, I just think that, you know, we're always talking about the money that has to be put in a Parks and Rec. It's just too bad we have to do that, and so on and so forth. I keep hearing that. Seems as Galt just kinda got a little spoiled with the revenue, the flea market being what it was years and years ago. And, you know, and then now it's not there anymore. And so, now, we like to just complain about that source, not, you know, having to put in more money. But in actuality, from what I've discovered, and I'm sure Rich could... But, but in actuality, from what I've discovered, and I've, I'm sure Rich could pipe in on this because he knows quite a bit about Parks and Recreation. I mean, I think most cities are putting in far more than twenty-four percent into their Parks and Rec program from their general fund, if they have, if they have a program.
I'm sure that they're, like I said, they're, most cities don't have another revenue source for it. So that's, that's true. What I can do is I can bring back to you something that looks at areas, the area cities, percentage of Parks and Recs, but they're all gonna be a little bit, um, they don't really follow the same pattern as Galt.
It's apples and oranges, I get it.
Because it's unusual that you have that additional revenue source.
All right, thank you.
So Claire, let me clarify. The four point four million, we still have it, it has not disappeared.
Nope, has not disappeared.
Okay, I get asked that every once in a while. How did we manage to come by that? How, how did we save that? I know you're new, but...
That's a really good question. I don't know specifically for Galt, I can tell you how reserves acquire through, through other municipalities. Reserves are hard fought, for the most part, because they are your insurance policy, they are your risk mitigator. They are hard fought, they're usually, currently, lots of cities are coming up with policies. Cities are coming up with more than just a economic stability reserve, they're coming up with layers. The governor just put out his budget and he added yet another layer to the reserves because all of us who have weathered this storm for a while get it. We understand how important it is. So it's really fiscal restraint, fiscal accountability that holds tight to if I don't need to spend it, I'm not gonna spend it, that, that creates a reserve. And then an intentional setting aside. Yeah, you could equate it to your savings account. I would call it an insurance policy also, because we're basically self-insured to be able to operate. So you've set aside a savings account intentionally for certain purposes. The general, the GASB recommends, GFOA, Government Financial Officers Association. They all recommend reserves and they recommend different minimum levels. Basically, at this point, they're recommending that if your reserve level drops to five percent, you just need to start cutting, cutting costs, laying people off, that kind of. And we don't want to go there, we know that they're escalating costs that we, we are already obligated to. So we need to look at all of those factors.
So getting back to the, the reserve that we thought we were gonna use for deferred maintenance, I know, correct me if I'm wrong, one of your goals was to have like a perpetual fund that we could use to, for the ongoing repairs we know are gonna happen over the next twenty, thirty years.
Yeah, during the budget presentation this last year, what was explained is we're trying to establish internal service funds to address our vehicles or deferred maintenance. And basically, those accounts to, and address those ongoing. The four point four million, which is the yellow area on that chart, we were gonna use that. However, you know, it was mispresented. And, you know, that yellow area is actually being used right now to balance your general fund because your revenues, or I'd say it the other way, your expenses exceed your revenues coming into the general fund. So that yellow area is kind of helping to balance, you know, those general fund expenses. I think, you know, I hear a lot of discussion and, you know, you know, parks is a very important, you know, part of this community. And we have some amazing parks, that's what makes Galt, and they're, they're very important. You know, so I, I guess, you know, there, there is a lot of discussion, council member farmers, correct, or vice mayor farmers, correct? There's a lot of discussion in this community about, you know, you know, the parks and, and the maintenance. And I, I think really the focus needs to be, you know, what are our priorities? To start, you know, kind of addressing some of these maintenance issues. You know, is it parks, is it buildings, is it vehicles? And how do we, you know, use that four point four million wisely over the next several years? If you burn through that four point four million, then all you have is your reserves. And then I think you're getting in a, in a critical point because then you're gonna start burning into your reserve accounts to balance your, your general fund. And we don't want to go there. So, you know, that, that's where I'm trying to get to this long, you know, range financial plan that our finance department is, is working and, you know, Matt is, you know, having, I think, a lot of fun with, you know, putting this plan together, you know, for the council and present that. Yeah, it's, you know, some tools that I, I want to bring to the council so you can start taking a look at what, you know, the, the policy decisions that you make, what impact does that have on the budget? And, you know, through that strategic plan process, where are, are our priorities? Where should we focus? And we're gonna come to you with some recommendations, but we're gonna want to see, you know, that, you know, discussion from the council. And I'm really actually looking forward to, you know, that discussion through that strategic plan process.
So do you foresee, we kind of were hoping for perpetual fund. Do you foresee any more money coming, maybe not as much as fast, but do you foresee that? If we spent all that, do you foresee more money coming into the picture, ever?
Well, that's part of the long-range financial plan and, and we're working a lot with Chris and Mr. Rice and Ms. Mendez on, you know, kind of the future of development. And, you know, we have to kind of look at all areas.
Okay.
You know, the council recently approved, you know, some kind of incentives for hotel development. We have another, the old Royal Delta Hotel, which is gonna be Days Inn, coming, you know, online. We've done some analysis on that, you're looking at probably two hundred thousand in, in TOT when it's kind of fully operational. Those are really good revenue sources for your general fund. You know, how does that tie into, you know, your plan? And so, you know, those, you know, items will be in that long-range plan. And when we think they'll kind of get to that full potential, and you're, you're gonna be able to see those lines on, on where we're at. You know, the revenue sources that was talked about this evening is, you know, the billboard that, you know, we're, you know, taking through a process right now. You know, that has a potential of, of some revenue source for the city, which actually is, is a recreation because it's on, you know, the, the three three seven three, you know, area property. So we, we're trying to be, kind of look at, you know, those kind of immediate sources. Of course, sales tax, you know, wherever you're trying to, you know, attract other companies, they, they come in that are, you know, higher sales tax generators. That's a long process, hard to quantify sometimes. A lot of times it takes years to do, but, you know, and we have good staff in, in trying to address, you know, those items. Longer range down the road, you know, the council, you know, has in the strategic plan, you know, the, you know, Central Galt is what I'm calling Parks Area Master Plan. It's where we have the grant to take a look at, you know, our forty-five acres of, of that, you know, our market and our sports fields in this city hall sit on. You know, what is the vision and what is the future of that? And then talking with Mr. Solis, you know, the Galt market in ten years is going to be a lot different than what it is today. And that revenue source may not be there. So we need to start visioning and planning today for ten years from now. And, and that's, you know, a lot of times very hard to kind of wrap your head around and conceptually for councils as well, because you got, you know, you know, four years here, you know, to, you know, kind of get things accomplished. But, you know, really, your job is to look at the next generation, you know, the, you know, next twenty years. And what is this community going to look like? So, you know, you have some kind of short-term, midterm, long-term goals that we're looking at to help that revenue.
Thank you, that helps.
I, I have a couple of questions, if I may. The first one is, I guess it's more of a policy question about fee schedules. From my previous experiences that I've had, there was always a percentage in which the department head or the, the city manager would have the ability to raise or lower fees if it was within a certain percentage. Do we have that policy here? Or do all increases or decreases in fee schedules come to the council?
Let me kind of address that, maybe have Mr. Solis, you know, back me up on our last fee schedule. And, you know, might be able to get some help over here from Michelle. Our last fee schedule, you know, we added in some language, you know, I, I, the city manager, I like to change fees unless I come to the council. But with our Parks and Recreation areas, when we get some certain flexibility with market and all that, there is some flexibility for the city manager to, to adjust fees for kind of marketing purposes, maybe help me out.
Well, there's, there's things that we're able to do. The city manager has authority to basically make deals with tournament directors, rentals, people that are gonna, groups that are gonna bring in a, a high number amount of people to the city that normally wouldn't come here to stay at our hotels, buy our food and all our gas. We don't have a percentage for our programs. What you have here is every program that we have in a rate sheet that breaks down each cost, what it actually costs, direct costs, indirect costs, total costs. And some of these costs are kind of high now. As Claire talked about, we're, with the minimum wage going up, that is the majority of our staffing for our, our programs. And we're just not going up looking at the twelve-dollar rate that just went up now. We're looking at the thirteen-dollar rate that's going up in January one because that's when it'll have the most impact on our programs. So that'll be one of those things that council will have to decide. How much are we gonna charge our, our citizens for participating in our program? We really don't have, we, in the past, with the city manager and the past city manager, we would sit down and go, what can, what, what can our citizens bear? You know, obviously, they can't pay fifty-five dollars to enjoy a day at the pool because the pool just costs so much. So we have to set those rates at what, we'll look at what Lodi does, Elk Grove does, and kind of come to a happy medium for our programs.
Okay, and I, I guess my question was, thank you for that, that, I think that answered what I was getting at. So if we were charging, and I'm just gonna throw a number out, ten dollars to play water polo in our, in our pool, and we want to charge twelve dollars next year, does that approval come to the council?
Yes, it does.
Okay, perfect. So just a couple of other questions. So I under, first of all, thank you for the presentation. It was government budgeting one oh one. It, it really helps as a refresher to kind of see it again. And I understand restricted versus unrestricted monies that, revenues that come in. And there are some restricted and unrestricted monies that come in that have C, Consumer Price Index escalators in them. Do we have a lot of those?
Michelle?
I know it's kind of a hard question.
With regard to fees? With regard to fees, we can generally as a rule collect what costs us for a service. So when you're talking about Parks and Rec, in general, they're, they're actually charging less than what it costs. So what we can do is charge to the amount of the cost for the service. And I think that our, our annual fee schedule that comes back to council for approval, a lot of those are at CPI, because we've set the original cost that the cost of the city is. And then annually, we will do a...
CPI adjustment. But also, the departments will look at that, like, like Amanda's talking about, there may be some things that are maybe above CPI, like the minimum wage cost. So they'll look at it for a realistic picture of where it should be in, and then we'll, we'll work from that perspective as well.
Right. And what I was more getting at was, like with lighting and landscape districts. You know, I think we're, I don't want to get on a personal soapbox about them, but I think they're just a failing way to do business anyway. Probably a great idea at the time when it was implemented years ago. But clearly, the CPI is not gonna keep up with the cost of services or the cost of doing business in that restricted fund. And so at some point, we're going to have to, and I think you addressed it a little bit today, at least begin to look at that and see what that's going to look like in terms of services and/or increased revenues and how we do that and, and those types of things. And so I think that's gonna be pretty important moving forward. I just want to make that, and I, my question, I guess, was more of, do we have a lot of those funds coming into the city, either through general services kinds of things, where we have a CPI that's attached?
We try to have a CPI attached to everything. Unfortunately, we don't have it attached to certain kinds of things, including a lighting and landscape district. And so there's no winning on that one. But we try to include CPI or some measurement. So there may be a fee study done periodically on certain types of fees because they're not gonna follow CPI and we're supposed to be covering our costs. So we try to.
Okay, and then just one last thing that relates to capital improvement. And this is just a philosophy that I, that I have. And in looking at our general fund expenditures, we're spending forty-six percent, it's our biggest investment, on police. And we have, I think I saw in there, significant capital improvement needs there. And I'm not, you know, stating that, you know, all the capital improvement money needs to go to the police department. What I'm saying is, is I think as a council, as we're looking at our investment, where we're spending our money and how we're spending our money, we need to use the capital improvement program to kind of gauge how we start to take care of our investment. And that's, instead of, at least in my mind, instead of saying we need X, Y, and Z, we look at where our expenditures are based on our strategic plan and our priorities and then say, okay, we need capital improvements in all these areas. Let's, a baseline might be, let's see where our investment is from our revenues and begin to go in that direction as it relates to rebuilding and restoring some of what we're doing.
That's, that's a great idea. Now, a lot of times that's coupled with a couple of other measurements, like what's the value of the... You're talking about vehicles primarily, but when you extend that out, what's the value of the different facilities? In other words, maybe I use the sewer plant. It's a small amount of operation and yet it's a huge amount to replace that facility in X amount of years. So all of these measurements become valuable in the evaluation. And I think what you described is one of those.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
No, thank you, I thought it was a great presentation. I think my takeaway here today is that, that, you know, we have some uncertainty in front of us. We have, as was pointed out, we have expenditures exceeding revenues. And I think before any decision is made, I think we need to get into the budget workshops to see and prioritize, you know, what do we have to do to maintain the minimal amount of services before we start talking about, you know, capital expenditures here or, you know, replacement, capital replacement? I think, I think we have to have a better handle, at least I do personally, to understand where the money is being spent now, what's the revenue shortfall, and how do we fill that gap in order to just break even to where, you know, these graphs are at least even and, and we're not lopsided on the expenditure side. So I think tonight was real good. I, I look forward to the workshops and digging into more detail as to where we can enhance revenue and, you know, if necessary, you know, cut expenses in, in those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. My still, I, I'd like to little bit more clarification on the reserve fund. I know the twenty-five percentage is a reserve fund. And reserve fund, like in four point four million, we have it there, we cannot use it. What level, if something, for example, the recession comes up, over a long term, we don't have the revenue, what level these reserve fund or four point four million we can use? Any purpose, if we necessarily have, for example, there's a recession coming in, we don't have the revenue, it's a long term.
So obviously, the council will make priorities and make decisions on whether it's spending that or, or building it up further. I would encourage you to look at a couple of things. One is this long-term plan as we bring it forward. One is service levels. What, what are the priorities for the community to maintain or to cut? Revenue sources, huge conversation going on right now, but we know that that takes time. The, the council does have the ability to modify certain decisions. Of course, you're gonna have me in the background cautioning you. Things about one-time versus ongoing... Things about one-time versus ongoing, things about what is a prudent reserve level. As you said, somebody just a few years ago said 25% is kinda big. I heard somebody in a conference a month ago say 50% was not what they wanted. They wanted higher than that because they knew the volatility in their own property tax base. And they, they were not happy with just a 50% level. Of course, that was somebody in the Bay Area that has a lot to, a lot at stake with property values. So these are considerations to be made.
Thank you.
I, I wanna, yeah, what Paul said, it's kinda like, what he's basically getting at is, you know, this is our rainy day fund, but how hard does it have to rain before we start looking at it? Again, going back to the analogy I used before, you know, if, if my family and I are putting away a certain amount of money because we're doing well, you know, and my car breaks down, I'm not gonna walk to work. I mean, that's just silly. So, I mean, at one point, we can't, if I was, let's just talk about Littleton, for example, if we have deferred maintenance on that building, and we say, well, we can't touch this reserves, that, that, you know, because we're waiting for the, the big recession to come again, we can't touch that. So then now that deferred maintenance, instead of being 400,000, is now 450,000 next year and the next year after that, it's 500,000, and we keep kicking the can down the road, and it becomes more expensive later on, instead of just taking care of that. You were saying about having 50%, some cities want 50%. Well, maybe those cities, it's like apples and oranges to Galt, maybe those cities don't have as many parks as Galt does. So it'd be hard to compare a, a city who has 50% reserve and they're not happy with that and they want more. I don't think we should be sitting here saying that, you know, that 25% is, is poor and we need to not touch that money. I guess we're talking about revenue, specifically fees. Mr. Councilman Lozano asked about fees, and, and I know we went through this not too long ago. I actually spoke myself in public comment against raising fees, only because I just feel like, you know, it's like, it's like breaking my daughter's piggy bank open to put a riff on my house. I mean, you raise $5 for a kid to play softball, what is that $5 really doing? We raise $5 across the board, we might come up with two or three, four or five, maybe 10,000 extra dollars, but then the next week, we're spending 20,000 on a consultant for, to look at something we wanna do in town. I mean, it, we, we're definitely, I don't think our priorities are, are straight. We, we can't look at, you know, we have this billboard idea coming, you know, that could generate $100,000 for parks and wreck, that's great. But to be honest with you, 100,000 is just a drop in the bucket for what really needs to be done here. I, I mean, if, if, if I run a restaurant and business is bad, I'm not just gonna start raising prices and think it's gonna fix itself. I need to start looking at other things. I need to just look at, you know, are we spending too much for tables and chairs? Are we spending too much for food? I mean, I, I think right now, we're talking about little tiny things, and I know those little things can add up to big things, but we're talking about little things that affect the public, that we're basically going right to the taxpayer. I mean, Galt has one, correct me if I'm wrong, but Galt has one of the highest sales tax rates around, eight and three-quarter percent, am I, you're gonna kinda, can you say I'm not, that's not true?
I'm sorry. My, my vision is, is more, maybe more broad than yours as far as location. 9% is not unusual in
Name a city that has a 9% sales tax rate.
What we can do is kinda do a quick survey of our surrounding cities and provide the council what the sales tax rates are.
I'm sorry, I'm just, you know, this is just, we're refreshing this, and I'm just, so basically, I'm just making a point where I agree with, with, with Rich and also with Kurt, that we need to kind of figure out where our expenses are going and then focus on what we think is most important, and most importantly, what's important to the community and what's, what's important to the citizens. Because I think that what's important to them doesn't always line up with some, what's important to the city. So.
So we will bring you information to try and assist you in those, in those decisions.
Thanks.
Any other discussion?
So thank you very much for your time. I wrote down a bunch of notes, and we'll be talking about the next steps and looking forward to the strategic plan and, and where that leads us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Claire. So Kimberly, do we need a motion to accept the presentation or?
No, this is not an action item.
Okay.
Accept and report.
So I
Just need to adjourn, yes.
Adjourned the budget workshop, done.
Thank you.
Okay. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Santu?
Here.
Councilmember Campion?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Lamson?
Here.
All right. Are there any agenda? Can I get everybody to stand up for the silent prayer and the flag salute? And today marks the sixth anniversary of the death and murder of Officer Kevin Tom, so if you would Can I get everybody to stand up for the silent prayer and the flag salute? And today marks the sixth anniversary of the death and murder of Officer Kevin Tom. So if you would think of him during our moment of silence.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, would you replay the statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, January eighteenth at nine a.m. and Saturday, January nineteenth at nine a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. On agenda approval additions or deletions, we're tabling the new employee introduction, which is C-one. We're also tabling F-three, the approval of final map and subdivision improvement for Morali Estates. Is there any other?
Tabling or pulling from the consent?
That was, that was tabled.
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
By the applicant?
Public Works.
Would you like some explanation on that one at all?
No, that's okay.
They can explain.
I would like to pull an item from consent, just for a brief question.
Okay.
And that's F-four.
F-four? Okay, anything else? Councilmembers? All right, we have a presentation by Patricia Gaiman from the Sacramento County Grand Jury.
Members of the council, thank you. I'm Patricia Gaiman. I'm president of Sacramento County Grand Jurors Association. We are composed of former members of the grand jury. One of the two of the things we now are objective, number one, is to inform the citizenry what the grand jury is about. People get that confused when they turn on the jury. And secondly, to encourage people to apply to be a member of the grand jury. And one of the reasons we like to do venues like this is first, we try this because you all have a television audience. And it's an easy way for us to let people know that they can become members of the grand jury if they'd like to apply. So this will give us an opportunity to tell them a little bit about what the grand jury is and get all every television members could apply to be on the grand jury.
Could you turn her over, please?
Hold on.
It's not working.
Is it on?
As most of you know. As most of you know, the regular jury service is one where we get a summons and we go down to the courthouse and there's a trial. It's either a criminal one, more often criminal than a civil one between a plaintiff and a defendant. And then you serve your time and you're done until the next time you get a summons. Well, the grand jury is very different. The grand jury service is for a year. It's from July one to June thirtieth. The grand jury may deal with some criminal matters, but the year I was on the grand jury, we didn't have any. California, unlike the other states, has a different procedure. And so if you've watched Law and Order on television in New York and people are always going and getting murders and all kinds of bad things happen, that doesn't happen in California. Unlike other states, California has a grand jury that investigates the local governments within the county. And that is in terms of any kind of problem, any kind of situation, the grand juries have the power to do that. And in the, in the county of Sacramento, that means the county government, the seven cities, the fourteen school districts, including the Los Reyes Community College District, eighty-four special districts, and fourteen joint powers agreements. So it's a broad swath of responsibility and jurisdiction that the grand jury has. So you could kind of say that the grand jury is kind of the watchdog of the local governments, particularly since newspapers have had to cut back and their investigative reporters aren't what they were ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. A grand juror must be impartial, very important, open-minded, closed-mouth. Everything that the grand jury does is by law secret and cannot be divulged in the process, even to spouses and close friends and people, even your own attorney. You can't tell anybody what's going on in the grand jury. Patient, respectful of the opinions of others, willing to work as a team. This is no place for Lone Rangers. This has to be a collaborative operation. Legally, a member of the grand jury has to be eighteen years old, a citizen of the United States for a year, a resident of the county for a year, and able to communicate orally and in writing. There are nineteen people on the grand jury and eleven alternates in the wings if somebody has to leave and life happens and so things do or people are not able to complete their full term, there are alternates available. The grand jury work is about fifteen to twenty, twenty-five hours a week. It's rather like having a part-time job, though it's okay if you take a vacation. Their pay, there is pay. There's thirty dollars a meeting, or two meetings, not to exceed two meetings a day, even if you do exceed two meetings a day. Most importantly, for anybody in this part of the world, mileage is covered and parking is covered. So if you have a long distance to go, like folks from this part would, because I just drove down here, I know how long it is, that's a, that can be a very big inducement to mean to make sure that you might be interested. The grand jury investigates and reports on the accounts, records, operations, functions of the governmental entities within the county. The grand jury by law has to tour all the detention facilities in the county, which means the two state prisons in Folsom, the county jail, the Rio Casumnas Correctional Institution, which is not too far from you folks, and any juvenile facilities. The grand jury reserve, reviews complaints that are submitted to it by residents of the county, and anybody can submit a complaint. The form is available on the grand jury website, or you can send a letter, and the address is on the grand jury website. The grand jury issues a report every year at the end of the year, June thirtieth. This is one from nineteen seventeen, eighteen. This is the report. And these are available online for many years, so people can look at them and see, especially if you're going to apply to be a member of the grand jury, it's a good idea to take a look at the reports and see what they're like and what kind of work you'd be involved with. The selection process used to be that the only people that could be on the grand jury were appointed by judges, but that has been changed a lot, so that for the most part, the people here would be concerned about is an application process. The applications are on the website for the Sacramento County Grand Jury, and you can take, download them, fill them out, and send them in. The deadline is January twenty-sixth, so that's just a couple of weeks from now. There will be a meeting in February in Judge Russell Ham's, in the courthouse, that Judge Russell Ham, who is the advisor judge, will preside over, and he makes a presentation to all those people applying to tell them how serious it is to be a member of the grand jury and how important it is that the work be well done. It's an important function of government. And then sitting members of the grand jury tell what it's really like to be on the grand jury. There's an interview process, and then the judges go over all of those that have applied, and they put together the applicant pool, and those people are notified. And in May, there's a, everybody's invited to Judge Ham's chambers, and it's a regular court hearing. The court reporters there taking everything down. It's a big deal. And all of the names are put into a bingo cage, and one by one, they're pulled out. It's as random a procedure as, I guess, has been devised. And when nineteen people are seated, then eleven people are alternates are seated, and the nineteen that are selected are sworn in right on the spot by Judge Ham, and then on July first, they take office. So I just wanted to let people know that this is kind of a thumbnail sketch of what happens with the grand jury, the kinds of things they do, and how, if anybody's interested, how they can get to be on the grand jury. And it's a wonderful experience. You learn a lot. You see a lot of things you never knew. You go to places in the county you didn't, weren't there. So I just suggest if anybody's in a position to consider it, do. And if you can't apply this year, there's always next year and the following year. And if you apply and get into the pool, but don't get elected, you get picked, you can apply the next year. You can apply for as many times as you want. We have a lady that's on the current grand jury, this is her fifth year. She kept going back for five times, and she won. So thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
So when you don't have another job, you can apply for the grand jury.
Thank you very much. Sounds like a very important and interesting opportunity. Hopefully we'll get some Galt people up there. All right.
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time the item is being considered.
All right, thank you. Can I call Susan Meacham to the podium, please? She's speaking on a tree on trail. Seems to be in the way.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
You state your name for the record, please.
Susan Meacham. And I live at nine four nine Cottrell, right at the corner of Marengo and Walnut. And there's a tree right next to my property coming through the fence. I have pictures. I've contacted Parks and Rec to no avail, and I'm really concerned that it's gonna mess with my foundation come down on my house. And I really like to see something happen, so that's about all I have to say. I know you can't. Do you have any questions of me? Anybody want to see photos?
Mayor, I'll just have staff, Chris, take a look at it, and we'll address it with Ms. Meacham tomorrow.
All right.
I missed your address. What was that again?
Nine four nine Cottrell.
Okay.
You probably know it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, looks like we have Bob Ballier on the Commission on Aging.
Thank you. Let's melt down for you. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor. Good evening, council people. As the only current member of the Commission on Aging, I had to cancel our December regularly scheduled meeting because we had no quorum. I ask you respectfully to consider the following action. One, the council member who intends to reappoint Marie P. Hall, who is present for another four-year term, who submitted her application and qualifies under the current city ordinance reference qualifications to serve on the Commission on Aging, do so, appoint her this evening if possible. Two, the council member who intends to reappoint Penny Niemeyer for a full four-year term, who submitted her application and qualifies under the current city ordinance reference qualifications to serve on Commission on Aging, do so, appoint her this evening if possible. Three, I respectfully further request that the tabling of the remaining appointment considerations for the Commission on Aging continue until after the proposed changes to the city ordinance reference qualifications to serve on Commission on Aging becomes effective. Four, finally, I respectfully request that the city clerk administer the oath of office to both appointees, if it happens tonight, as soon as possible, but therefore, but before our next scheduled commission meeting, which is next Thursday, January twenty-fourth, since Ms. Hall is with us tonight, maybe the oath of office can be administered to her before the end of today's council meeting. Ms. Niemeyer, on the other hand, indicated that she would be available tomorrow for such an oath of office if the clerk's office contacts her for that purpose. That way, the commission will be back in business, having a quorum. To continue to advocate for the senior population of our city with the important task of preparing for the opening of Galt Senior Resource Center by the end of March twenty nineteen. As of this evening, I have received four volunteer requests from the community to serve in the resource center, so I'm real excited about that. And when Ms. Niemeyer gets back on the council, on the commission, I will work with her to make sure that we schedule training, whatever is involved with all that. And I'll be meeting with the director of Parks and Recreation tomorrow to address the further check-in to the progress of the resource center that's coming up. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Mr. Ballier, I have to apologize. I, we got your letters, appreciate your letter, and I actually didn't realize that they have to be on the agenda to be appointed, so when Vice Mayor Farmer asked me if he could appoint his during this council meeting, I assumed he could at the end during comments. And that's what I get for not checking with my city clerk and city manager, so I really apologize. Do you want to finish addressing?
I have this on the next agenda.
Okay, so that means probably we won't have a meeting for, that's right, we won't have a meeting because I'm the only one there.
Well, Mr. Ballier, also too, just so you know, that I think it was the consensus of some of the council to table the appointments for some of them, and for myself, it was the Commission on Aging, because my particular applicant will not be, would not qualify until the changes that we've, we've set in motion. Those changes, of course, won't be finalized until it's a process and it takes time, and so it's going to be on the agenda for the next meeting, and then we'll hopefully, we'll have to see what the timeline is for that.
Right, that's what, that's why I put number three.
Yeah, so just so you know, I mean, I know it, I feel your pain. I was trying, I wanted to appoint someone to Safety Committee tonight so that they could attend the meeting, which is on the twenty-eighth. Unfortunately, based on what Mayor Lamson just told you, I wasn't able to do that, so...
I was just hoping for the two, so that I can have another meeting, because we didn't have a meeting in December, now we won't have one in January, but it is what it is, and I'm flexible. We'll catch up.
But there's, there's nothing prohibiting them from attending the meetings.
I understand, but we can't take any action, as you know.
He doesn't have a quorum, he's only a member.
Right.
Now, I can vote for myself, I guess.
It's a quorum.
Okay, well, thank you for listening. Good evening.
All right, next, I would like to call Bonnie Rodriguez, who is going to speak on the very exciting details of Galt's hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
Well, I'm going to call it a birthday. So Bonnie Rodriguez, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to say happy birthday, Galt. You're about a hundred and fifty years old, not as a city, but as a community. And I'm here before the council to invite you to join the chamber and the historical society in celebrating this entire year, this hundred and fiftieth year. This is a pretty substantial birthday, one that is very difficult for me to say, so I'm going to try it, everybody can correct me. Sessinquintennial? I can, I can write it, but I can't say it.
Sessinquintennial.
There you go. So a hundred and fifty years old, this is pretty significant. So the two, the chamber and the historical society would like to meet. We've decided to have a meeting, and we would like to invite the city to possibly send a representative as well, so we can start planning some activities or an activity. That's what this committee needs to get together and decide what to do. But... But the community should be aware that, you know, this is a significant step for us. This is a kind of a big deal. The city celebrated it in 1994, their 125th. There was many activities throughout the year. And then, of course, on, in 1969, there were, all throughout the year, there were many things planned for their 100th, for their centennial. And so we would, not that we are going to match that, but we would like to bring some attention to GALT. This is a significant birthday for us. I would call it an anniversary, however, I'd like to offer our thoughts and prayers to the police department, since they're celebrating a different anniversary today. We won't call it an anniversary till later. So this is the GALT's 150th birthday, so I hope that the City of GALT can participate with the other organizations. And anyone out there in TV land or in the audience who has any input or would like to participate in helping plan or volunteer, we strongly encourage you to reach out to either one of the organizations, find out when the meeting is and where, and we welcome all input and all help. So, thank you.
Do you have a meeting set, Ms. Rodriguez?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a meeting set?
I do, and I can't remember, was it the 22nd?
January 22nd.
Oh, that's right. Two weeks from today.
Send me an email on the date, and I'll get a staff member there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? All right. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Sandu.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Campion.
Not tonight.
Councilmember Lozano.
Just nothing really to report, but the first SECOG meeting is gonna be on Thursday morning, and so the next council meeting, I'll have something to report on that. And then Sacramento Area Transportation Authority, the first meeting for that is gonna be on the 14th of February, and so more to come after that.
Okay. I attended the youth commission meeting last Monday, and they're working on some events and things, and they helped, and they're working on helping at the Winter Bird Festival, so that's kind of exciting. I also met with the Director of the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, of which I'm now a board member, and I will be joining you Thursday morning for my meeting during the time, so. All right. Information calendar. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, December 18th, 2018? Receive and file warrants for period ending December 19th, 2018?
I would like to make a motion.
One second. Treasurer report for period ending October 2018 and November 2018? And I believe Councilmember Sandu, go ahead.
Yes, I would like, I would like to make a motion to approve the minute on last meeting.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's for the entire calendar, correct?
Right.
No, no.
I didn't... There are three items on consent, and she read all three. I read the three that are still left on consent.
Okay. It was for the consent calendar.
Yes.
Should be items one, two, and five on the consent calendar.
Yes, that's what I read, one, two, five, sorry. Okay. So we have a...
Second.
Councilmember Sandu made the motion, and Councilmember Campion. All right. Call for the vote. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0. Now, have you pulled the ones that we pulled? Okay, so up for discussion is the template for Department Director Employment Agreements.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to ask one question. I apologize to city manager, this was a last-minute question that popped up, and I don't know the answer to it, and I'd rather see if we know it before voting on it. And in Section 5 of the agreement under termination of, I guess it's termination of employment and severance, C, in the second paragraph, it talks about a severance of up to no more than four months or whatever's fewer than, well, it says over the number of months remaining in an agreement, whichever is less. The question was posed that there may be some kind of restriction, either a purse restriction or a legal restriction on the amount of money a severance can pay out.
I think I can answer that question for you. There are legal limitations on the amount of severance that you can pay out under the government code sections, and some of those are cited at the end of the template. Usually, I think it's one year is the absolute maximum under the statute, so the four months is under that provision and what has been in current department head agreements.
Okay.
We weren't making any change to that. And it would then be if it was less than four months left on the term, that would be the lesser of the two. So this is in compliance with the updates to the law.
Okay. And I, and the question was posed that it was something like $50,000, and I, and I thought that was awfully low, and I don't know where that would have come from. Does that ring a bell? Because I tried to do quick phone research, but...
That does not ring a bell. I don't think that's correct that I'm aware of. I'll double-check. Obviously, this would, you know, we would be making updates to this as required by the law, and we have added sections, so I will certainly double-check. I'm not aware of a dollar amount limitation. I'm aware of the time limitation.
Okay.
As to the amount, the number of months of severance that you can authorize.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
So, I have a question. I actually had to email city manager with some questions, which he clarified for me on this. So to understand what we're approving here is basically a template that he could use for further, to just to be consistent in hiring, you know, whatever we do now. So we have, for example, a four-year term and, say, a four-month severance, just to point out a couple things, that he could use that as consistency to go forward instead of it varying. He mentioned to me that this was the time, the reason he was bringing this up is because we're in a moment now where we're getting ready to hire a department head, Public Works Director, and so he thought, obviously, the staff report says it'd be a good time to bring this up to see if there was any input the council had in changing any of the things that we're offering. This would be the time to do it. Otherwise, if we approve this, basically, they'll just continue with what's being set forth already. So I just wanted to make sure my fellow council people understood that's what it is, and if there was any comments or anything anybody had about terms. I personally, the four-year term, I understand that, you know, you have to entice good people, so it makes sense that you wanna make good offers. I also, when I look at a four-year contract and then think severance, I think, you know, you commit to someone four years and you're locked in. If that person doesn't work out, then you're automatically on the hook for, I mean, I don't know, I just think that if there was any input at all from me, I would like, maybe if there was, we could look at maybe like doing a two with a two extension of some sort. I don't wanna slow down the process, I'm just, I'm just throwing ideas out there. I just think that it's a healthy time to discuss and see if we're all on the same page. So...
I don't understand. What was your concern, Sean?
Just basically bringing up if anybody had any input about changing what we currently offer. We currently offer four years, four years is what we typically offer, you know, that's the set amount that we offer a department head, and then four-month severance. If there's any, if everybody's okay with those, if anybody would like to see, you know, a longer severance, more or less, a longer term of contract, anything like that, just wanna make sure that everybody understands that this is what this is about, that we're giving city manager a green light to just continue with what he already does.
You know, on this issue, I have one question. I believe with the city manager, I believe there's somebody who asked the question on that, it's a minor changes. If somebody explained to me the minor changes, what kind of minor changes, his pamphlet we're using before and the pamphlet we are using right now.
I think I can answer most of those. Some of them are just cleanup as we were going through the agreement. One, I was checking the code citations that we had in the agreement. Some of them have been changed in the government code. I think that was the primary one, and then just adding in, you know, clarification, just basically bracketing points that were changing from various agreements, so that there would be a maximum of up to four years. The current templates just say they are four years, so this was, that would be the maximum. And then also the severance, and then noting that the other benefits would change. Those were the primary changes. They were just minor cleanup edits, so...
Thank you.
And I'm happy with the template. I think a template's a good thing to have, so that we have a starting place for when hiring and people understand kind of what the base for a contract would look like. Of course, these are, these are negotiable contracts with the prospective employee. And so, but I think in terms of trying to gain some consistency in allowing the city manager to have a base to work from that we approve and then move forward, I think that's, that's a good thing, as we, hopefully, we don't have to hire too many directors. But as far as the severance, I'm not necessarily concerned about the length of the severance. I think it, I think if we hire well, we don't have to worry as much about severance, so focusing on the hiring, I think, would take care of some of that. But I'm okay with it. I just had that one question that popped up, that I thought, oh, no, I hope we're not doing something we shouldn't.
I think, like I said, I will double-check on the $50,000. I think for most, with the four months, most of yours are going to be under $50,000 in any event, but I will double-check on that to be sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm satisfied with your agreement.
So maybe Councilmember Campion, since you've been a department head, is the four years normal or some average for some of the cities you've worked in?
Well, I think the four years gives, you know, a future employee some sense of stability. They may have to relocate, and for anything, if you went with a two-year, with a two-year option, I don't, I think it would cut into the pool of potential candidates. And again, if the employee's doing a good job, you can always come back for a contract amendment for an extended period of time. So I think it's, I think it's a good starting point.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so Ms. Hood, you said that it was basically just altered where it says a maximum of four years. So if our city manager wanted to go less, it would be up to your discretion?
Correct.
And just to clarify, just so the public knows too, city manager has sole authority to hire and fire in-city employees. These are not approved by city council. He, we hire him to do that. So if he picks out a candidate, that contract basically is negotiated by him. It doesn't come to the city council for approval. So just wanted to clarify, that's how it works. That's correct, right? Mr. Plaza?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right. Can I get a motion to accept the template for Department Director Employment Agreements?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by, was it Councilmember Lozano? Can I get a second?
I'll do the second.
Second by Councilmember Sandu. We'll call vote. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye.
All right. Scheduled manners. Sorry. Do I open the, do I open it first? We received a presentation regarding the adoption.
You wanna read the item, or...
Close refuse collection rate adjustments.
Introduce Mr. Clarkson to start us out with this item.
Mayor, council. I have the, I have the fortunate introduction here for this rate case. I've been involved in several other rate cases, and when I woke up this morning, it said it's my turn. No, I'm kidding there. Lot of information. We're gonna do a presentation here tonight that's gonna give a lot of information on what we had in the past 10, 11 months, coming up through an agreement that the council adopted, a contract back in September with Cal Waste. And then, following the Prop 218 guidelines, we moved forward over the next several months to present the, to present the tables, to present the, the fees that are gonna be charged, to notify all the public the way we're supposed to provide. And we have a series of things that we're gonna try to accomplish tonight. Besides the presentation, it's gonna be, again, broken down into parts, what we've done up and through September, and then what we followed on the Prop 218 from that point forward to today. We're gonna ask that you have a public hearing right after we give the presentation for comments from, from the community. And then we're gonna ask the city clerk to go ahead and count up all the protests and everything, the written protests that we have. And then if, if you would like, we have a resolution that we have for you to adopt tonight, available. So right now, we have, with Public Works, we have Carlos Solaria, who's going to provide the presentation. We have some people in the audience from Cal Waste, who are here, Jack Fiora and others. And then we also, we don't have our consultant from R3. They had a family emergency this morning, and unfortunately, they can't be here. But I think between us, between the experience that we have, between a former employee, Steve Winkler, who's on his own dime, he'll provide history if needed, but we're all, we're all here ready to respond as needed. So, Carlos, you're up. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson, for the introduction. Good evening, Major Lamson and members of council and everyone else in the audience. Again, my name is Carlos Solaria. I'm the administrative analyst for Public Works. And, well, some of us may be familiar with some of the terms of the contract that we've seen back in September, and know the upcoming rate increases based on what we got in the mail. Some of us may still be wondering, so how did we get ourselves into this? Right, so I'm gonna give you some background and some information that will hopefully help you answer those questions. So, there are several factors that led the city to negotiate an extension with Cal Waste. First one is, the contract was set to expire in the current fiscal year, and so we, we had to renegotiate. However, there were other items that were also pushing for an update to the services contract. And that, those included changes in the market, changes in state legislation, and of course, one of the reasons to stick with Cal Waste is because they have been providing excellent service at very competitive pricing to the community. And so, let me talk about the market. So what does changes in the market mean? That means a lot. We hear it on TV, and you may be wondering, oh, how does that really impact GALT? Right? So, and other communities, of course, historically and until recently, China has been the greatest importer of recycled material, and they create all these great things that we then purchase through and make up another product. So in 2000, between 2017 and 2018, China created new policies and created new programs that restricted a number of recycled materials from other countries, and that included the United States. And so, yes, that's restrictions on the US, but what about GALT, right? So, a majority of these recyclable products that were banned or were not, no longer acceptable to China were also products that are recyclables that were collected here in California, and more specifically also in GALT. So, just to give you an example, Cal Waste went from having or collecting some revenue for the community from the sale of recyclable materials to having to pay for the disposal of recyclable materials. So, we're collecting, we're getting some revenue, all of a sudden, we no longer have that revenue come in to, to the community. And what about state legislation? There are many changes that are affecting how Californians dispose of their trash and how Californians recycle. With regards to, what is, so there are, there are a number of changes in legislation that affect the city and the statewide. Three of the most important are listed on the screen, and these are AB 341, which set new goals for diversion throughout the state. And so what does that mean? So all of a sudden, the state wants us to recycle more and... So all of a sudden, the state wants us to recycle more and to send less to the landfill. AB 1826, which mandates recycling of organics and food waste in various areas. And it's set on a progressive scale. So, you know, first, a certain number of businesses and multifamily complexes with generating a certain number of or certain amount of trash are required to have recycling programs, organic recycling programs. And that increases over the years for these businesses. In addition, SBE 1383 sets higher goals of diverting organics from the landfill to 75% by year 2025. And to give you an idea of what that looks like on paper, on the screen, you have two pie charts. One, which shows the current level of diversion by the city, and the second one, which shows where the state wants us to be. The red represents the amount of trash that's going to the landfills. And so, as you can see on the first one, we are at 64%, and the state wants us to be at 75%. So that is a huge jump. It may seem small, but when you think about what it takes to change the way that we recycle, the way that we do business, it's a significant amount of work that must happen. Not only that, but there are other implications that affect how we get from the red on the left to the red on the right. So these new laws, again, represent new programs that must be implemented in the city. And that means we will be recycling more if we want to keep the trash away from the landfill, if we want to keep the organics away from the landfill. And so, what does that also mean is that we will have more recyclable materials and with the market the way it is, we have a surplus of recyclables. And it further struggles to sell or to dispose of recycled material. Just as an example, in 2018, as these progressive mandates start to be implemented, Cal Waste was unable to find a place to dispose of its organics for several months. And it took several months for them to find a location to get rid of them. So we were doing our part in collecting the materials, but we had nowhere to send them. So that's another problem that we're encountering, and that's another effort that Cal Waste is working on. And that, unfortunately, creating programs and spending the resources and sending these recyclables to the proper places costs money. And that money, those extra expenses on the hauler unfortunately get passed on to us, the consumer. And so, that's why we are also increasing the rates. You may see that bottom portion, not to mention that we were also, in a way, spoiled by not having implemented a rate increase for the last past, for the last five years in the city of Galt. To ensure that the city negotiated a new service contract or a contract extension with Cal Waste, the city, city staff were guided by an ad hoc committee of city council and R3 consulting, specialists in creating this type of contracts and reviewing service rates and ensuring that entities entering to sound contracts and adopt sound service rates. During the, next slide please. The new service contract was approved by council back in September, I think you want to, there you go, back in September, may, was briefly mentioned by Mr. Clarkson, there is a 12-year term. And several changes in the contract, primarily changes that will ensure that the city is in compliance with the new state mandates. And in the new contract, Cal Waste has some responsibility for ensuring that this, that new programs are created and that the city is in compliance, subject to city penalties. Some of the new changes in the contract include new programs, new carts, and lots of community outreach, as I said earlier. Not only do we need programs, but we also need to inform our citizens or businesses of which mandates are requiring changes and what changes apply to your business and to you as a resident or citizen. Other non-mandated changes that come with the new contract are new service trucks, a new bulky waste program that will include the use of a handy hauler, which is a very handy container that allows people to put their, what they, what used to be known as a bulky waste inside a container. And it makes it also more effective for Cal Waste to collect. Another change that comes with the new contract is the creation of a rate stabilization fund, which is sort of a cushion that was built into the contract that will, in a way, reduce the impact of future rate hikes. So if we were to be faced with significant changes in market or legislation, there is a rate stabilization fund that will, in a way, offset some of the costs, some of the impact to the consumer. Before going in detail about the rates or putting some of the rates up on the screen, I'd like to remind customers of their rights with regards to final adoption of the service rates. Because this is a property-related service, the rate approval is still subject to Prop 218. So you all have a say in this. You all have the right to either protest or support the rate increase. At least 45 days, part of the day's public hearing, the city may have written notices to all customers and property owners within city limits. And these notices included rate information and included instructions for how to submit a protest. Written protest must be in writing and must be submitted to the clerk, to the clerk before the close of the public hearing tonight, which is next. Only one protest per property. Oral comments will not qualify as a protest unless they are accompanied by a formal written protest. Protest must be submitted by the customer, property owner, or their authorized representative. And because we know that sometimes reading all the details in those notices is not the easiest thing, especially if it's defined print, we've brought with us some protest forms that can be filled out tonight. We have both ends of, or in case there are citizens interested in filling them out, just be sure to submit your completed form before the end of the public hearing. And you can hand them back to staff, and they will direct them to our city clerk. Majority protest rule applies, which means that if there is a majority of the property owners or residents that protest to the adoption of the rates, the rates will not go into effect. And staff will have to seek further direction from council as to how to provide the services in a compliant manner. So residential rates, the table above shows the proposed residential rates compared to the current rates. It's a significant increase, as you will notice. All service levels listed above include a 96-gallon yard waste and recycling cart on alternating weeks, and is set to increase over a two-year period, subject to a water, sewer, and trash index rate in future years. As the graph on the screen compares the existing, the proposed, the Sacramento average, and the North California average rates, you will notice that the rates compared to have jumped significantly from our current rates. Fortunately, Galt is one of the leading agencies in the Sacramento region to update their collection services agreements to address the changes in the markets and changes in legislation. Unfortunately, because we are leading in the region, we have no comparison in terms of apples to apples. The other agencies, our neighboring agencies, are still going through the process of updating their contract or are barely looking at it in that sense. However, when you compare the proposed rates to the Northern California average, the rates still seem pretty competitive.
Hey, Carlos, I'm sorry. Can you tell people what the colors represent? Because it's kind of hard, some of us may not be able to read the colors.
Yes. The light green represents the current rates, darker green represents the proposed rates, the blue is the Sacramento average, and the purple is the Northern California average. As I said, the dark green, which is the proposed rates compared to the blue, seems a little higher. But again, we are leading the path in terms of updating our services contracts to be in line with what's required by the state and with the changes in the market. In fact, other agencies have reached out to us and have asked if they can see what our contract looks like, and as they are going through the process right now. Commercial rates are also going, increasing significantly. And earlier, I briefly went into some of the legislation that is affecting businesses, which is driving some of the, why these costs are increasing. A lot of the legislation, parts of legislation are centered on commercial recycling and commercial organics recycling. And those programs are what I was referring to as creating a surplus of recyclable material and requiring the creation of additional programs and infrastructure. Comparing, again, the commercial rates to our existing rates, same colors, light green represents the current rates, darker green represents the proposed rates, the light blue represents the Sacramento average, and the blue represents the Northern California average. The rates still seem competitive when compared to Northern California average. If you were also to do some math in terms of comparing what a residential container costs and how many containers make up a commercial container, you would realize that even though it looks like the commercial rates are increasing significantly, the rates would still seem pretty sound and seem in line with the residential rates. I will now hand it back to Mr. Clarkson, but will remain available if you have questions.
So through the history and what we've had of all the input from staff, from city council, the ad hoc committee, and the council adopting a proven, a contract last year, we've developed these rates. And we've had R3, unfortunately, R3 wasn't able to be here today, but they were able to look at financials, they were looking, be able to look at details. They have the experience in dealing with these type of franchises. That's why we brought in a separate consultant to come in and review everything with Cal Waste and making sure that we're getting a good benefit for us. So now, we're looking at continuing the Prop 218, and if the council wishes to have a public hearing on this.
All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Receive comments and written protests. I have some public speakers.
Again, Bonnie Rodriguez, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. This is a touchy situation for us, as you can imagine, as Cal Waste is a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and we have many businesses who are members of the Chamber of Commerce. A little bit of a conflict. Cal Waste, the chamber recognizes Cal Waste is probably one of the best community-minded businesses in our city. And they routinely are in the schools. Anybody calls and asks almost anything, Cal Waste is there. I'll be asking about the 150th birthday party. But we do have a number of businesses who are going to very much struggle under what's happening. And we understand, this is not Cal Waste going for a money grab. We get that. We know that they are under a lot of pressure to comply. The city is under a lot of pressure to comply. But we do have quite a few businesses that are going to struggle. As you saw in the graphs that are up there, there, a lot of these businesses are going to hit with almost a 30% increase. We have a business locally who had a four-yard waste bin, and when the mailer came out, was very shocked and went down to a two-yard waste bin. And their bill will still increase monthly after cutting it in half. So the chamber would like, not just the council, to recognize the hit, and it is a significant hit, that the businesses are taking with this increase. But we would like the residents to know that the businesses are taking a hit, and please be patient with them. Our eateries are, are going to be hit tremendously. We have one that is very popular in town, that their garbage bill alone is going up over $2,000 a month, going up, going up to $2,000 a month. Again, this is not Cal Waste's fault, and there's no blame put there. But our, the residents and everyone need, I mean, everyone's getting hit. And this is hard. This is hard. I live in town too. It's hard. But our businesses are going to struggle with this. So the chamber would like to put a plea before the council that as other policies are being put forth in front of you, and as other, other options are putting in front of you, whether it's wastewater, or whether it's water, or whether it's that you have to have certain amount of connection, connections for irrigation that are not being used and you're still paying an outrageous connection fee, that there are some thoughts put into these poor businesses that are taking a hit. And let's be honest, and it is very recognizable, that the businesses are taking a greater hit than the residents, because the businesses don't vote for you and don't have the numbers to go and fight for this. So please keep them in mind as other options come before you, because the chamber has been approached by several businesses that this just might be it. They were struggling before, and these kind of decisions on top of other decisions and fees, this just might be it for them. This is a significant sacrifice for these businesses to take. And again, I want to make it very clear, this is not Cal Waste's fault. We appreciate and recognize everything that Cal Waste does for this community. They are there. They are there 24/7, for the most part. And, and so we, we thank Cal Waste for being there for us, but we really are pleading with the city council to watch for your businesses also. You have businesses start failing, I don't have to give you the economics over it. You have businesses failing in town. You don't have a thriving town. Your economy plummets, and everything you make up, every, all the decisions you make up here are for nothing. So please keep these businesses in mind when future decisions that you have a little bit more control over happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I'm having a hard time with this name. I see RW Loots.
Lutzenheiser.
Lutzenheiser? Okay. I just can't read all the letters, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Do you need it spelled? Hit your name for the record, please.
Hi, Ron W. Lutzenheiser. I own a house at 994 Dordele Court. Due to my age and ears and whatnot, I was having problems understanding what the gentleman was talking about and reading his charts. I mean, I can understand what he was saying about the colors, but according to this right here, the different, what's, on the average house, what size of a container does it have? These plastic containers, these wasteline containers? Does anyone have any idea?
I can answer that. So the, the average residence in GALT is using a container which currently costs around $25.
No, but what size is it?
64 gallons.
64 gallons, okay.
So it says here that 64 gallons is going to go up roughly, what, nine bucks a month? But that's what, for the first year?
Yes.
Second year, what's going to go up second?
It will go from, it will go after, after the three rate increases happen until 2021, it'll actually go from 25, so if you're paying 25 now, you'll be paying roughly $39 at the end of the increases. So it's basically about a four, it's a $13 and some odd change increase over three years.
Okay, well, I guess when I originally read all this, I was, when it first came out, I guess I was reading the industrial one.
Yeah, the, the charts are very confusing, I have to tell you. I had to go back, and the commercial charts are very complex. But the residential one, I looked at that in depth because I, you know, had many citizens asking, and, and like I said, to repeat that again, the average, the average household is using a cart which costs about $25. That same cart, at the end of the three-year increases, one increased starting in February this year, and then next year, February, and then in 2021.
When you say cart, you're talking about the?
Yeah, your trash can.
Okay, this is for each one?
Yes, so your trash can, if you're using, if you are one of those average citizens who's using the 64 gallon, right? 64 gallons? Yeah, then your, your rate will be approximately $38, roughly $39 by 2021.
Okay, does that go for the green waste and the recycle?
Those are included with your service.
Sorry?
Those are included with your service. At no charge. You get the recycle, you get, you get one recycle, you get two recycles included with your service.
Right. But then, so this is just overall for service then?
Yes.
Not per can?
No.
I got three cans, I'm not, $13 a can every month?
No, only your, yeah.
Okay, well, it's a little hard to explain. Personally, that kind of shoots a hole in the reason I came here, because I know my wife and I are retired incomes, but $13 a month we can afford. Undoubtedly, there are a large number of other people that $13 a month is going to hit. But listening to the gentleman's original statements saying that because of China won't take these things to recycle, and because the United States has passed these laws, then you have to split this stuff out and recycle, it seems like to me we're approaching this from the wrong end. Instead of charging more to recycle, shouldn't we be cutting back on the products, the products that are made from these items that are hard to recycle? I mean, why, why stick the user? Why not stick the producer? Let the people, that, that, okay, it'll drive up the price a little bit, but let the people that buy it, let them suffer the cost instead of all of us. Kind of reminds me of the state of California just passed, well, they extended the gas tax to folk, to quote, fix potholes and bridges and stuff, and the reason they had to do this was because for years and years and years, government raided the gasoline tax money and used it in the general fund. But now, and they scare everyone by saying there's no money to fix things, you know, raise the taxes. And it's like the people out in Southern California, for 60 or 70 years, they've had poisoned water and been drinking it, and nobody's said a thing about it until this election year. All of a sudden, it's a big deal, and now they want to tax our drinking water to fix their drinking water down there. Seems like the governor go, the government goes at this at the wrong end, and quite frankly, it upsets me. Thank you for listening.
Do we have any more public comment? Or protests? Come to the podium, please.
My name is Elena Bedar, and I live on 175 Polo Holiday Drive. I own a home. I've been living in here for the last 18 years, and I have been seeing all the increase month. Right now, I am in a fixed income. It doesn't seem to be a lot for a lot of people, but for me, the increase month increased more what I have to reduce in my living expenses. I was looking at the chart where they were explaining that there were money they were collecting that went back to, you know, to the people. But I don't see where the money went to. That's number one. Number two, the chart, that what is in LA, in Sacramento, they're trying to put big city with a lot of more people, and all they have less, this community is not very affluent. And they're trying to connect those chart to this community. So my question is, where is base of those chart of, I know that they have regulations, I understand that. But we cannot keep up with the big city when this is a small town. That was my concern. And I will have to say that. Thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Jerry Soder. I live on Lakita Court. I guess my only concern is, and I just want to go on record saying, I understand the legislative requirements for the rate increase. What I'm a little concerned at is, when my car insurance goes up, I solicit bids from other car insurers. When Xfinity raises my rate, I look and see who else there is. I'm a little concerned that the council entered into a 12-year agreement without an RFP for waste collection services. And if I'm understanding that correctly, if it's not correct, I would like to know. But it is concerning that the council didn't conduct an RFP to solicit competitive bids for waste collection services. And then if Cal Waste did turn out to be the local provider with the best rate for the community, go ahead and remain with them, or to use competitive bids with other organizations to perhaps leverage them instead of hiring a consultant to develop rates? So that's my issue with the increase, not the legislation behind it. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have another one.
I see you have, Rick Walters.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, I'm on board. I see you have a guard tower and some barriers here. Did you check with the state of California before you put those in?
Absolutely.
Okay. Extraordinary circumstances in the contract. Can somebody explain to me what the heck that means? The way I read it is that they can raise the rates anytime they want, the city or Cal Mr. Campion, you were the?
Well, Mr. Palatz, would you want to?
Well, I'm not quite sure what section or what he's talking about. I can certainly get?
It's in the contract, sir. That's what we're here for, to discuss.
New laws type things.
Okay, I don't know what the section you're looking at in the contract, if you want to?
It's right in the front of the contract, within the first 25, 30 pages.
Any more public comment? May I receive a report? All right, we're closing the public hearing. Can we receive a report on the tabulation of written protests regarding the proposed refuge collection rate adjustments?
Okay. Including the written protests that I received tonight, I've received a total of 17 written protests.
Okay. In the absence of a majority protest, can I get a motion to adopt a resolution approving the proposed refuge collection rates as set forth in the public notices sent to customers and property owners, including an annual adjustment through 2024?
Mayor Lamson, are we not allowed to make comment regarding, before we vote?
We can, if there's some discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. Paul, you can go ahead.
Yes, first of all, I would like to, if somebody can put on the commercial rate comparison on the board, and from somebody from public work, they can explain line by line what that meaning is, and how the rate can affect on the current rate, proposed rate, SAC average,
Would you like to see commercial or residential? Who restarted it? This chart right here?
Right, I just need to understand, you know, the current proposed mean whatever we proposing SAC average is Sacramento average, right?
Yeah, the SAC average is for the city of Sacramento.
What for North California average?
Do you know which the Northern California were? I don't know all the communities.
It's the purple.
What does each one of those three groups stand for, please? I mean, you have four colors, but you've got three separate groups.
Tell me the color.
Right, the, again, the light green represents the current rates.
What does group stand for? Do you have three groups?
Mayor, can you?
We have the current year, year two, and year three.
Okay, the hearing's been closed, so we, we can't have any more public comment for that, but go ahead.
Okay, my question is, North California means North California also include Bay Area, too, right?
Right, so the, the light blue is the Sacramento region?
Right.
And the Northern California represents Bay Area, Sacramento.
Bay Area, right. So our proposed rate on a commercial, you know, I'm talking about, this is a done deal. I just want to make sure, make a comment to the public, how the small business can affect the rate. Their proposed rate is very much compared with the Bay Area. And all the public know, there is a difference between Bay Area and Sacramento, the living span.
Well, one thing you need to also recognize, Paul, is that many of the cities in the Bay Area have already adjusted their contract in line with the proposed legislation that we are facing and addressing in this contract. So they have already done that.
Yes, sir, I, I do understand.
So that, that is one reason why their rates would be comparable for ours.
Right, I, I do understand.
Okay.
Let me, let me, when you turn, I, I certainly, you're going to have your opportunity to.
Sure.
There it is proposed, I'm talking about, this is done, done deal. The previous council already adopt and city stop. My question is, the local residents, local business owner, they are backbone of our revenue, and they can be a biggest can hit for these rates. And if you comparison with the current rate, with proposed rate, your rate, look at that road, the Sacramento average is much lower than the proposed rate. And I do understand the residential rate is also heading to two, but I don't know, the, the, the business, they can be a big hit. If their rate going to 30 or 40% up, and there is a lot of small business in this town, and they're going to get hit. And that's my thing, is I just want to make sure the public know, this is done deal. Current council might, we cannot do anything, because the protest is going to be 50%, and everybody know, there can be a low 50% protest. A lot of, you know, business owner, they ask me, and that's my responsibility to bring to the public. Thank you.
Do you need them to answer anything else for you?
No, thank you.
So, just to comment, I think what Kurt was saying, just to clarify what Kurt was saying, Kurt was saying that, that he believes that most of Bay Area has become compliant as we are, but Sacramento may, the Sacramento bar that you're seeing, it says the SAC average, they may not be in compliance yet. Would that be a safe assumption, or am I wrong on that? Is that why they're still, is that why the SAC average is significantly low than Northern?
I just say a true statement, the city of GALT is leading the path in this change. So other jurisdictions are barely starting to talk about updating their contracts. Some of them, which had already extended service contracts and have no need to extend or create a new contract, are already talking with their haulers because of these changes in the market, and because of the cost that their haulers are incurring, they're requesting a rating.
So if we saw the same graph in like, a year from now or two years?
It'd probably look much different.
Okay, I was just, was just elaborating what, so on behalf, you know, I actually have spent a great deal of this week diving into this very heavily. I actually went to Cal Waste twice, I did a tour of the facility, I've actually asked many questions of them for their, for clarification. I've actually spoke with many people in the community, both residents and business owners. I myself am a Chamber of Commerce member and a business owner, Paul is as well. We understand firsthand what it's like about these, these commercial rates. These commercial rates are high. It is truth that, that the way that the numbers fell, that the commercials are taking, the commercial rate payers are taking the brunt of this increase. To start a little bit with residential, I can say that even though I do understand that $13 is, is a lot to fixed income, my father's on a fixed income, $13 is, is a big jump. But I also can say that in my own research that I've done, because I don't take anything at face value, I, I consult with, you know, city manager on things, I get input from Cal Waste, and then I go do my own research, because I don't just take anything from, from what I'm told, I go and, and I try to confirm things. And I can say that even after the three increases that the average person will take in a residential side, the rates will still be lower by about $4, $3 or $4 than Lodi pays currently. So if you were living in Lodi, you're already paying what we're going to be paying, what an average resident will be paying in three years. So this would lead me to what one citizen commented about going out to RFP. I wasn't part of the negotiations, the previous council was. I know there were very extensive negotiations. We hired a consultant, which reasoning behind that was they wanted to bring in an expert that would, you know, so the city wouldn't make any missteps in there. I'm not a big consultant fan of, of doing that, but I understand what the basis of doing that was, and it was to make sure that we were doing the right thing. I can tell you that if we had went out to RFP, we might end up with someone like Waste Management, which is who does Lodi. We'd be dealing, and I just told you what Lodi pays. I know firsthand, and I know people that work at Waste Management, I know people that work for the company, and I can tell you, one thing is that companies like Waste Management are not involved in the community as heavily as companies like Cal Waste. Cal Waste gives extensively to the community. And I know that's no consolation for those of you that are paying higher garbage rates, but I'm telling you that these people give back to the community. And again, you know, they've been mandated by California. I, I was, so in my tour of the facility, I was shown, you know, blocks of recycled materials that, you know, years ago would bring over $200 a ton to be sold. That same cube of recyclables actually costs them money to dispose of it now. So you can see what's happened is, the state of California is still mandating that we, you know, that we divert, you know, more into recycling and become cleaner and more green and all that, but yet, the economy and, and global economics and everything is playing a part, is changing things, and it's, it's becoming more expensive for Cal Waste to do business. And a per- In a perfect world, I mean, we could just not raise rates, but, you know, we can't control what comes trickling down from our state government and what is being posed, and we all know as Californians that every time we turn around, there's something else being handed to us, saying, got to do this or got to do that. I, so as Paul said, this is kind of already, you know, this ship has sailed, more or less. The previous council, that there was a huge negotiation for many, many months, they arrived at a decision. I don't think that anything could have been done differently. What I do would like to say is, I, Paul is correct when he says there's nothing that current council can do about these rates right now, and that is the truth. There's nothing we can do. This is going to pass, and what you've seen is going to happen. But what I would like to see is, I do think there's something the council can do, maybe in the future, moving forward, and I would like to work towards that, is to possibly see how some of the money that is involved in this waste collection can make its way back to the community. And I'm not just talking about the money that Cal Waste already donates and get tributes, but I'm talking about, I will be looking at, seriously looking at, you know, seeing if the council would be of the same mind to see how we can somehow, you know, I know we're in a budget crisis right now, but to divert some of the money that the city intakes for GARP for rates on refuse can be, make its way back to the community, so that we can indirectly see that money back in the community, and this could possibly be, you know, something that businesses could see in the long run, even though they're getting hit with these huge increases, they can say, well, but at least we're seeing some of that money make its way around the circle and come back into us. I can't go into detail about that right now, but in the future, maybe we could, there'll be more discussion on that. But again, as a business owner, I'm sorry, you know, I feel your pain, I definitely do, and Paul is a business owner as well, and I know Paul's rates are going up huge, I know that for a fact, we've had that discussion, so we feel your pain, but again, our cans are kind of tied at this moment, but we do care deeply, you know, for all the people that came up and had their, put their two cents in, and I apologize, I couldn't give you a better answer than that, so, sorry.
Councilmember Campion?
No, I, it was a very long and detailed negotiation with Cal Waste. And I think, I think the decision that was made by the prior council and hopefully the decision tonight to move forward with this, I believe is the right one. I believe it's the right company for this community. They have a very long history. Again, that by no way means that they should be entitled to it because of that relationship, but I think that the rates are accurate. That was R3's job, was to evaluate the reasonableness of the rating structure and to develop the rates that we have in an effort to make sure that not only is it sustainable for the consultant, for the operator, given that, you know, there had been no rate increase in five years, and that it's reasonable to the consumer. And I think, I think all of those objectives were met with this contract.
Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, everybody's kind of taken the thoughts out of my mind, but just a couple of things that really haven't been touched upon. You know, we keep, we talk about the state mandates and it coming down, it's also coming from the federal level too, indirectly or directly from legislation, but one of the things, one of the reasons I think the public needs to real, hear is that the reasons that recyclables aren't being recycled, purchased, because a lot of those recyclables at one point were purchased overseas, and there's been some parameters put on that as well. And so, it's the federal government, the state government, and now pushing it down to us here at the local level, and I mean, local level, not just the city council, but us, the citizens. And so, it's really a tough one to swallow for me. You know, I talk all the time about economic development and what we can do to support our existing businesses, and trying to do what we can to make their lives much easier and much more profitable, because I think then it turns around, and like Councilman or Vice Mayor Farmer said, is, you know, then comes back into the community. And I will say, this, I don't believe tonight is really about the credibility of Cal Waste, because I think we all recognize that, but one thing I do want to point out is, you know, they were at our community dinner this last December, and we were in need of some appliances, and they went and got those appliances so we could help prepare the food to serve our people here. And so, I don't want to, again, go over that, you know, over and over, but I think they are the right company for the, for our community, and, you know, it's going to be a hard pill to swallow for everyone, and I suspect that our, you know, prices for goods will go up in our commercial businesses, and so we will be affected again as residents. But I don't know that there is much we could do at this point in time in terms of the rates, so I'm not one for rate increase on anything. It certainly doesn't make me feel any better when it's passed down from people down under the dome in Sacramento, and so, but I would be willing to support the recommendation tonight and move forward.
I have one last quick comment, because I forgot to ask, sorry. It is important.
Sorry, I was going to take a turn, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead then.
Just, just to let everybody know that we had the consultant in R3 to check out the other rates like Councilmember Campion was talking about, and it was a negotiation. They didn't get what they asked for first, it was a negotiation, there was some wrestling going around, so we really did what we thought was best, what we could do for the community. And we're supposed to reduce waste by what, Ms. Plots? By when?
75 percent.
75 percent? So hopefully, the businesses can start reducing their waste and get on board for that and save some money. And Mr. Farmer said, there's nothing we can do. Well, let me tell you, I have received at least three phone calls asking me to get on board for zero waste. Mayor Lamson, you need to get on board for zero waste. And I said, no. And they're, how can you not get on board for zero waste? And I'm like, well, I'm a math teacher, zero is impossible, and that would come back to my constituents' pocketbooks. So there is things we can do and you can do, but you have to write those letters for the California and for the federal, so they stop with all these regulations. Sorry, go ahead.
So just real quick, just so the businesses know that, and correct me if I'm wrong, someone from Cal Waste, but I was told that if a business wants a representative from Cal Waste to come out and help educate them on ways they can, they can change up the way they're disposing of stuff or whatever to try to be more economical and lower their bill, that that's a free service that they can, they can take, is that correct, Jack? I see you nodding your head, yes. Okay, so if you, if you are a business owner, you're watching this, and you want someone to come out from Cal Waste and educate you on, you know, Garbage 101 and how you can streamline the process and help lower your, your cost, they are willing to do that. Also, on the residential level too, one of the things that was negotiated in with the contract was that all citizens are entitled to not only a handy hauler, which is one of those dumpsters that can get dropped off, which is a three and a half cubic yard container, you're entitled to that once a year, you request that, that can be brought, you know, saves you a trip to go to the dump if you want to throw stuff away, and then in addition to that, you can also have 3.5 cubic yards of waste picked up, such as like, you know, an old microwave or some kind of appliance that can be set curbside, that's the same content, 3.5 cubic yards, you're entitled to that also. These are included in, in, as being a resident, you get these services. So these were things that Cal Waste threw in to try to, you know, lessen the blow to the citizens. So, you know, by means, take advantage of those, you know, do some cleanup around your place, you're entitled to it, so use it.
I would like to make a last comment, thank you for the call, they always doing excellent job, and we believe they can be here. The only thing I would like to bring to the public, the commercial, you know, the business, they can have the pain, but that's the way they have to live with it. Thank you.
As far as the businesses go, we're actually going to have representatives go up to every business and reevaluate their service options.
Rudy, can you, can you come to the podium, sorry? Get you on camera.
Back to the resume with Cal Waste. So we're actually going to have like, a representative from Cal Waste go to every business and reevaluate their service needs and how recycling fits into that, and with each commercial container price that you saw up on the board, there is a 96 gallon recycling cart that comes with that service, so that business will instantly be in compliance with the new state mandate that is mandatory commercial recycling. So there's an element to that that is included in that rate, and as far as the, us going into businesses, we want to come in and get you the right service levels with recycling and reducing your trash, so that's, we're not going to change your rates until we touch every business, so that's included in the contracts. I just want to clarify that.
Good to know, thank you. All right, I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Campion. Can I get a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, everyone. All right. Regular calendar, City Manager's Office. Request to waive the Public Employee Pension Reform Act 180-day waiting period to hire retired annuitants to perform specialized duties.
Wait a few minutes till everybody clears, or do you want me to dive into this?
Liberty Ranch students, just so you know, we start at 6:00.
We have work.
Okay. Who's your government teacher?
Ms. Robinson.
Okay. I will, I will email her tomorrow. No, apparently not. We switched it a year ago.
Teaching government, they're not teaching time management.
I think we should make him speak, to count for credit, right? Extra credit? Extra credit? And you can also contact...
I wasn't prepared, you know, this is my first time that I'm one of these meeting.
You can also, you can, yeah, no problem. You can also contact the City Clerk's office, and we do post them online, so they're also available there.
Thank you.
All right, ready? Would you like the floor, floor back?
I can dive into this, thank you, Mayor, members of council. A portion of my job is to provide my staff the resources and materials and things to do their job. A lot of times that comes through, you know, hiring some consultants, and I know there's a lot of talk out there in the community about, you know, consultants and hiring them, and there's two reasons to really hire consultants. One is that they bring some history, experience, skillset, expertise on a topic or a matter, and then also time. A lot of times we find that, you know, there's just not enough time in the day to move projects along. The item before you today is to request that you adopt a resolution to bring Mr. Winkler, who has recently retired from the city, back to help out with two specific projects. We're working on, you know, several projects that are identified in our strategic plan to kind of move them forward. Two of those projects, I believe, need, you know, more attention, they're becoming a little bit more critical for us to complete. The projects, you know, lighting and landscape districts, I think that came up several times tonight, you know, through our budget presentations, and a lot of that concept is that our lighting and landscape districts are, you know, kind of moving towards not being solvent, not keeping up with the cost of doing services. Now, how do we, you know, kind of stop that? Is there a way? In my strategic plan process, I kind of showed you some white space areas on the map, that there are a lot of areas in the city that aren't paying for a lot of the services, so is there a way to kind of address that? The second project is our joint-use transit facility. We embarked and received $3.3 million through SAICOG grant, transit grant, to kind of redo our transit facility. We came back to the council, the property that, you know, we went through an environmental process, didn't, not quite working out, so we're, you know, looking for a different site. We're also speaking with the school districts on partnering to kind of come into that process and work with us, and possibly do a joint facility that we can all utilize and work together. Project is becoming a little more critical. Mr. Clarkson and I met with SAICOG last week, wanting to know our progress, where we're at, if you're going to use the money, if you're not going to use the money, we've got other uses for it. We're working with them to kind of show them our outline, and our deadline, I think, is 2022 to get our new facility, you know, in the ground. Gives us about four years, I believe, not a whole lot of time, but I think it's doable within that time. My opportunity is that Mr. Winkler has the experience, expertise, and some desire to come and work for us. He's in the audience this evening, so I can, just a little bit, he's, I think, getting some list of other things to do from other bosses he has. But I think the opportunity is here to bring that expertise for about six-month period to help us get on track and build a better foundation for these two projects, and, you know, take a little bit of relief from staffed, so we can, you know, get those moving. So I request the council to approve this resolution tonight. It's a process to bring back a retired annuitant, this resolution does need to go to Cal PERS. I am not versed in that whole process, but Ms. Hall is, and can they kind of help us out if we have questions on that process. So I open up the questions to the council.
I have a couple of questions to start off. So, the way the staff report reads is that the reason to bring back Public Works Director is to finish off two projects that you have deemed urgent or a priority, for lack of a better word, whatever the verbiage is, and that his expertise in this is why, and if we don't, then we could possibly be looking at hiring a consultant to do so, is that correct, Mr.?
Well, I guess we can always go out and hire consultants at, with the PERS rate, Mr. Winkler would work at the rate of, you know, pay that he was receiving with the city, which is 74, 46 an hour. If I went out to hire consultants in our typical consultant contract, and I actually pulled a few of those, principal consultants, project managers, charge from 145 to 200, 220, you know, dollars an hour, if I'm looking at going out to, you know, try and pull in somebody that may have, you know, some expertise, I think the fortunate part of this is, Mr. Winkler has six years of knowing the city, knowing the projects. If the council chose policy-wise not to approve this tonight, you know, we'll try and figure out how to, you know, move these projects along. I would say the transit project is our priority, and I'll work with Public Works to try and keep that moving, and SAICOG happy, you know, with our timelines. The lighting and landscape district project will be bumped, you know, further down the list at this point. We're working, trying to establish CFD, you know, for Liberty Ranch, citywide CFD, there's just other projects that, you know, I think, you know, take some, you know, other priority. I do believe that, you know, right now, I think by the end of the year, we need to figure out the lighting and landscape district project, and I need some focused work on that, and that's what I'm asking.
Okay, so this is one of many questions I have, so thank you for that answer. So in my email correspondence with you from a couple days ago, I had asked you if you were close to hiring a new Public Works Director, you said that we are close, that you've made a proposal to someone, you've actually, what, we as the council entrust our city manager and with the faith that you are going to find the best people to fill your departments, which is why we don't really have input in that. We don't have input, we cannot tell you who to hire, or don't, or tell you not to hire. We can't even, you know, have any say in the contract, more or less. This is all done at your discretion, because us as a council have entrusted you, our city manager, to find the appropriate people that you think are going to best fit our community in these department heads. Public Works is one of the... Public Works is one of the, you know, for lack of a better word, the most, one of the most highly paid positions in the city. It's, it's that important. If you are close to hiring someone and your words were probably by the end of February, pending background checks and things like that, my question to you is that if Mr. Winkler had not retired and he was still working, would we be talking about hiring a consultant to finish these projects if he was still on board right now?
With the transit project, possibly. You know, I would have to, you know, analyze, you know, kind of resources. You know, a new Public Works Director, yeah, I want to make sure they're successful, just like, you know, my job is to make sure the council is successful. In turn, the council's job is to make sure I'm successful in, in doing, doing my job. So, you know, kind of balancing, you know, those projects, you know, I would be sitting down with Steve if he were still here and trying to figure out how do we kind of move those projects along. You know, right now with the CFD projects, you know, we have a team of people that are, you know, working through those projects, you know, including consultants. We've hired Will Dan, we have a, you know, finance advisor and all that. And in order to get the Landscape and Lighting District projects, you know, kind of moving forward, I'd probably say, yeah, we'd probably hire, you know, you know, somebody to help us kind of figure that out at this point. I think Steve can, you know, utilize some of his resources, you know, to, you know, help us move that Lighting and Landscape District, you know, project forward.
So, and I have no doubt that, that Mr. Winkler knows what he's doing. I, I've, hadn't, hadn't had that many meetings with him, but the one meeting I had with him, I know he was very passionate about what he did and, and he was very knowledgeable. I also know that Mr. Clarkson, how long have you been with GALT, Mr. Clarkson? How many years have you worked for GALT?
Forty-five.
Okay.
Seven.
So I, I also, I also know that Mr. Clarkson is, is very good at what he does. So speaking specifically to bringing on a new Public Works Director, I, I do find it hard to believe that, that, that your ability to hire a competent and highly qualified person to fill that position, also coming on board in a new city, I understand that, but with someone like Mr. Clarkson as his, as, you know, to show him the ropes and bring him up to speed, I just struggle with thinking that we have to pay someone's retirement, then pay them to come back as a consultant. I, I just have, I just have a problem thinking we need a consultant at all for that. And then, and then thinking that that person's not going to be competent enough to manage the day-to-day. I know there was some verbiage about, there's so much stuff going on and there's just a lot to have somebody do, so we just need this extra person. That's my thought on that. You know, there's a lot of inconsistencies in this. This is, dive into the, the actual proposal itself. So the proposal talks about a projection of 205 hours needed. If we were to hire Mr. Winkler, 205 hours is what is projected he would need to come on board and finish the completed said projects. So 205 hours at the rate that he's, would come back at, basically comes out to, and it was stated here that he would work approximately 80 hours a month. So that would be, basically be 2.5 months. So my question is, if he's going to start in February and he's working approximately 80 hours a week or a month, and he's going to need to do 205 hours, that's 2.5. There's verbiage in here about a pay increase in July. And the actual contract itself, under Article Number Two, the time of performance, basically states that this employment contract would be until, until December 31st. It also mentions that he is not to exceed 940 hours, which is mandated or controlled by our municipal code, and I guess 960 hours by CalPERS. So basically, he could work up to 940 hours. So you're asking us, you're, you're projecting that he only need to work 205, but the verbiage of this contract that we would be entering into him says that he's allowed to work up to 940. And then there's also all kinds of verbiage in here with saying, well, depending on operations and if, you know, because I know how projects work. I mean, you, you project what's going to take and then, then things maybe run over. And then my problem is I can see this as like, well, you know, Steve's such a, he's so good at what he does, like we got this other thing we need him to work on. And then, you know, hey, since you're here, work on this. And pretty soon we blink our eyes and we're at 940. So this $15,000 that you're projecting that we're asking us to approve on is your estimate could very well be, ended up being 940 hours, which is more like $70,000. So I'm just struggling with, no offense to Mr. Winkler, I know that he's good at what he does, but I'm struggling mainly with the idea that we even need to have someone come on and help us with these, these projects. I feel like, you know, if we're hiring, you know, a top-rate person to come in and, and fill those shoes, which I'm assuming that you'll be doing, that we don't need to have Mr. Winkler come in and, and work on this other stuff. I feel that a new Public Works Director, and, and being that we're in a budget constraint right now, I mean, it just seems, it would just seem very careless for me to approve something like that and just be writing a blank check of up to 940 hours for him to come in as a consultant. That, this is my, that's my thoughts right at this moment.
Those are good thoughts. The, I guess what I heard from you is accountability. And, you know, when I embark on a project and kind of look, look at timelines and all that, and I definitely want to come back to my bosses and, and be accountable for, you know, what our progress is and, and, you know, how we are doing. The contract in there, you know, has some flexibility. Bottom line, it has $15,000, you know, or close to $16,000 that I'm requesting, you know, to spend 200, about 220 hours. You know, I, I don't know that Mr. Winkler will be able to work, you know, you know, the 40 or 80 hours, you know, during that time period. Gives us some flexibility to kind of stretch that out. If I exceed that $16,000, then I'm coming back to the council and I'm going to have to be explaining to you, you know, why, you know, I need more dollars or where that project is. It may be that you are, you know, comfortable and confident that we're moving forward with a good project. You know, we need a little bit more to finish it, or maybe it's completed at that time.
But correct me if I'm wrong, it's not asking, you're not asking us to approve $15,000 and change. It's basically saying that's your projected estimate, but you, basically what you're, what we're approving is.
Let me turn that over to the attorney, see, see what she, she has to say.
So the agreement template is based on the CalPERS templates, which is based then on the 960 hours maximum. Your municipal code does, I think it's the personnel manual has the 940 hours limitations. So that we just used based on flexibility. If the council is concerned with allowing, you know, having the provision up to that maximum, we can certainly clarify that it should be less than that. I don't think CalPERS will have an issue with less. Their concern is the ceiling of the 960 hours. So if there is an interest in revising that to put either a, you know, an hours cap that would be close to the 15,000, we could certainly do that, if that would address some of the concerns that I'm hearing.
I think it would be a whole, just again, my last thoughts, and somebody else can comment how they feel. I just, I think it would be a whole different conversation in general if we were saying, well, we haven't found the right replacement yet and we just, we're still, you know, actively recruiting. And so in the meantime, we're going to have Mr. Winkler come back aboard and help out. Or again, if we were talking about a specific cap of time, but we're really not doing that. I mean, we're, we're basically, you know, talking about him coming back on board simultaneously with hiring a new person. And, and to me, I mean, it just seems like we'll be triple paying. We're going to be paying for Mr. Winkler's retirement, him coming back as, as part-time, and a new Public Works Director. And, I mean, we, we, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we just froze, we were asked to freeze all O and M expenditures in light of our budget situation right now. And we're talking about cutting this and that and so forth and so on, and then we're just turning right around and, and just, I, I just.
Sean, I, I can't, you know, I, I, I understand what you're saying. At the same time, I don't think we should jeopardize $3 million in revenue over $15,000.
It's not $15,000, Kurt. It's not $15,000.
It's, if you, if you listen to what the city attorney said, we can put a cap on the dollar amount here. The, the, the thing that I think is, is maybe you don't have a firsthand knowledge. When, when a new director comes in, it takes them no less than six months to even know what's going on in this operation. He's in charge of water, sewer, storm drain, wastewater treatment plant, all the personnel, and he's got ongoing projects in addition to new development projects. This job requires somebody who not only is, is very knowledgeable in those areas, but also has a working background and knowledge of the city and the existing projects. To expect the new Public Works Director to come in and assume these responsibilities is a measure of failure. It really is. I think what we're trying to do here, I think what the manager's trying to do is find a way, at the least cost, for the biggest, biggest reward, and that would be securing that $3 million for this transit facility, assuming it can go forward and we have cooperation with the school districts. I think that's very important. And I, I don't think that $74 an hour for, for, for a person of, of Mr. Winkler's expertise, skills and abilities is very, very reasonable. I, I, I find it hard to believe that this becomes an issue when you look at the issues that are facing the city. We've got issues with the Lighting and Landscape District. We know it's going bankrupt. We've got to do something.
We've known that.
So why wouldn't we hire somebody who's familiar with this process and who can focus on it and hopefully come up with a resolution to present to council for consideration?
Well, that's what we're doing by hiring a new Public Works Director.
No, see, that's your misconception, Sean. This person that's being, he has, going to have so many other issues as well. You can't, there's only so many, you know, hours in a day, Sean. I don't, you, you, you haven't sat as a public work director.
You're right, I haven't.
I've sat next to them for over 30 years. I know what they do.
And I, and I do value your opinion, Kurt, because you've been, I, I know you know probably better than anybody sitting up here, because of your experience as assistant city manager, you know how things work. And so for that, I do value your opinion. But I also was elected by the people of the community who have been reaching out to me in force, wanting to know how I could possibly consider paying, I mean, people are already upset when they find out what some of our department heads make. But I tell them, these are people that are, they're, they have a certain skill set, they're hired to do a certain job and they, they, they're good at what they do. So I just, I just struggle with telling them, well, you know, our new guy, he's not going to be good enough, it takes them six months to be good enough to be able to handle these things. I just, you know, I mean, we're sitting here being asked to cut things. I understand you, you, you don't want to miss out on this, the money that, you know, let's be finished this project. But, so I, I know that someone, I know that you spoke to, would you like to elaborate?
Sure. I, how long, so the transit, the school districts aren't on board yet. And, well, I spoke to the superintendent today and they're, they're not, they're interested, but they're not on board. So I know Mr. Winkler's not going to be able to finish that in the six months.
Well, it's, it's.
We don't have property, so.
It's a one-year contract, limited by whatever dollar amount we have and the number of hours, 960, and Mr. Winkler's willingness to work under that one-year term. So it isn't limited to six months, it could be a year, spread out over however those hours are managed.
And, and thank you for clarifying that. That's exactly the point I was making, that if we're being honest, I mean, this, I mean, if we're being, you know, the, the, cut and dry, it's, it's, it's going to, it could be 940 hours. I mean, you know, you.
No, 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 no. You, you missed my point. You can limit the dollar amount of this contract. You could say, it's good for 960 hours or one year, but the, the dollar limitation is going to be $16,000. End of story. As soon as that's out, it's done.
So if we did $16,000, that's 205 hours, 34 hours a month, eight hours a week. I don't know if it's possible to do it with eight hours a week.
I, I don't know, I don't know what, are you saying?
We're just trying, we don't want to approve a big 70,000 or we'd rather, I would rather wait until, if it's going to be huge expense, but the 15, if, if we're, until a budget and we know what's going on with the budget, it's kind of just.
So I know that LLDs is a big deal. So Mr. Winkler was kind enough to brief me very well on that. I, I actually have a pretty good grasp of that and what, what hard decisions need to be made on that to try to right that ship. And so I think us as a council, with the guidance of Mr. Clarkson and a new Public Works Director, I think we kind of already have a little bit of a, of a mindset, especially with someone such as yourself, Kurt, who has kind of a background in it. I don't think that we'll have any problem coming to some kind of conclusion what to do with the, with the Lighting and Landscape.
It's not the conclusion, Sean, it's that getting the actual work done. We can sit here and spout policy all day long, that's doesn't get the work done.
Right. But I don't like paying, I'm not going to pay somebody, I'm not going to write an open check for $70,000 to pay someone and then on top of that pay another 160 or 180,000 for another Public Works Director to come on board. I, as elect, I was elected by the people to, to, to have that check and balance in situations exactly like this, exactly like this.
And, 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 and I was elected for the same reason. Okay? I'm looking at it from a point of view of what is most efficient and what is best for this community. And what is best, in my opinion, is to hire Mr. Winkler on a limited-term basis, and we put right in the resolution, this contract is limited to $16,000. If he's not done and we want to have him continue, he comes back, we give him more money. If we don't, we cut ties, that's it. But I think we, I, I, I am real concerned about this transit deal, as, as you heard the, the staff say. They were up talking to him, that if, you know, if we're not going to use it, they're going to take that, they're going to pull that $3 million. I think $15,000 to leverage $3 million is a pretty good deal.
But I think if the school district has said, excuse me, well, the school district has basically stated that they're like, oh, yeah, there was some discussion, but they, it's basically not even a priority to them. The way that they're talking, it doesn't even seem like, it seems early in the, in the negotiation process. I find it, I just don't think that, you know, 15,000 is going to bring.
The transit deal does not have to include the schools.
All right. Well, I've said my piece and I do, I appreciate your, your insight, Kurt. Thank you.
Before Paul talks, can I ask, what budget and are we under budget? What budget's this coming out of?
The budget for the transit portion will be out of the transit funds. The budget for the Lighting and Landscape is out of the Lighting and Landscape District.
Which we're way under on, okay.
As, as you know, Lighting and Landscape gets backfilled by general fund. If, on the flip side, you know, we need to figure out a solution, you know, to this and I think it's money, you know, worth spending and trying to figure out a solution.
But you're confident we can afford it?
We're going to do, kind of nod over there from Ms. Tyson and Mr. Clarkson, and we'll do amendments, you know, and the adjustments that we need to admit here.
Okay. Councilmember Sandu?
Yeah, I have the same concern because right now, Mr. Clarkson, we using as an interim of Public Work Department, right? And he's a qualified to do his job. And Mr. Winkler, he did the excellent job and I believe if we bring him back, he will do a, a good job. But the question is, is he, we're going to bring him, is justified? Is we can, cannot do without he bringing back because it can be a budget. We are in a budget crunch. And we also, I believe, we have a experienced city manager, he already had the interview and already he's bringing somebody at the end of February. So if we really look, Ma, we have only two months and we still have an interim of, of Public Work Director. And when the new public, regular public work, if we really need something, we will think and we will discuss with him, we really need to bring him back. And at this time, my opinion is, you know, same thing, I have to, you know, this is taxpayer money. And I do understand your opinion is much stronger, but we have to use a money very wisely. If something, I know there's two projects, Lighting and Landscaping, it was a problem for years. Is already started? No. So same thing, is it changed, there is a big grant. But I'm, is a good public, you know, director or the city manager, they can prioritize the thing if we, you know, without doing extra money including other department. That's kind of my opinion at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Lozano?
I have a couple of, a couple of comments. In preparation of starting with CACOG, I had the opportunity to talk to a few of the CACOG members, which this 3.5 million is, is coming from. And although we didn't talk specifically about the 3.5 million, there was certainly some conversation around the use of funds and, and making sure that public, that organizations are using their funds and not sitting on them because there's projects all over the area that really could use the extra money. And one is just, just north of us here and, as it relates to transit. I, I, too, also concerned obviously about spending public money and, and how we're doing that. But I also see the, the investment of the $3 million as a significant benefit to the city who, where. city who, where we are, could use the additional transit facility to better our community. And so the, the fact that we have this money out there, I don't think this is a, really a case of the ability for anybody to do a job necessarily. It's about lag time, in my opinion, and not making sure that as we're going through, forward with this project of using the, the money that's been granted to us, that there is no lag time so that we don't get to a point where there are, are asking for it back. And I'm not a huge proponent of retired and new at work, I think you just hire a new person and do it. But there are a couple of cases where in my, in my experience, we, public agencies have used retired and new tenants, and the benefit really, in my opinion, isn't the fact that somebody's already been there. Because it could, it doesn't even have to be that, that somebody's already in the organization. In this particular case, I think this is a unique project, and the, the knowledge of that project specifically, and the money that is hinged on and possibly going back up north, is, is a, is a big chunk of money. I, I don't think we'd turn down a $3.5 million grant under any other circumstances. And so I don't know the history of why we're not spending it fast enough or any of that. But I think if we're going to invest, and I'd be willing to put a cap as well, but if we're going to invest in the community, we're going to have to spend a little bit of money. And so I, I would, I would support spending the, the minimum amount of money that was put on the, on the, in the staff report, and then us doing our jobs and engaging the city manager on when, what the progress of it is over the 220 hours, and, and holding the city manager accountable for the work that needs to be done. And so that, that would be my suggestion, but I'll defer to you.
Thanks, Rich. And I appreciate you being devil's advocate on both sides of that. What you said makes a lot of sense. And, and again, what Kurt says, I, I value his opinion greatly as well. So I had a couple more questions than, while I'm taking this all in, if, so this, the, the SECOG money that we're in, we're, we're worried about losing, how long, how long has that been available? I mean, how long has this project and we've known about this? I'm trying to establish a timeline of how much time we have had to have been working on this, and all of a sudden now we're like, oh my God, we need to finish this right now. But this isn't something that we just, just got like, you know, a month ago, right? This money?
Mr. Clarkson addressed the, the project and, you know, the, the status, Reader's Digest version.
I'll give you a, a real quick summary of it. Back when I became the city engineer, about two and a half years ago, we had identified a, a spot out there where the original parks building is right now. When I evaluated the project, we had already completed 99% of the, of the environmental on it. And when I evaluated the project, saw it was in the middle of a residential area, saw that parks didn't have any money to put into it, saw that public works had no money to put into it, and it was anticipated $5 million would come from public works to help with that facility. Then we approached several entities to look at a joint use in a different location, and from the time of meeting with people who owned an oil company that owned near the right-of-way, the railway tracks, to meeting with the school district, to the school superintendent retiring, leaving on, it delayed for about another six to eight months. When we started thinking about getting on track is when Mr. Winkler gave us his notice. And now we have, we have this table filled, and I just espouse Campion, so we have so much projects going on that if, if you put something on it, something falls off. And that's exactly what's happened in the last, about the last year with, with the project. So this project, now we, we, we got into a new agreement with SECOG to where we would use the money by 2022, because of the changes and stuff. And so we have that period now. And right now, we are, we are in that time period. We can do the environmental in a year, do the design in a year, and construct the project in the third year. So we're, we're at that timeframe right now to do the work. And we're not looking to delay it. Are, are we at risk? We're at risk. We need to get moving on that project, plus other projects that we have, you know, that, that we're moving on. So that's, that's been the delay for about the two-year period that I've been city engineer.
So I, thinking about what Kurt said, you know, about people coming, beginning, you know, taking time to bring it up to speed, but I still just have a hard time believing that a new public works director will come on and just not be familiar enough or not being able to be brought to speed within a couple, two or three days about lighting and landscape, or, or this, this joint-use facility and be like, this is what we, this is where we're at, this is who we've talked to, what do you think? And then, then hit the ground running. I feel like if that person wasn't that person, then maybe we should be looking for a different employee. I, you know, I mean, the council's going to do what they're going to do. I've stated what I think. You know, I just feel like if we approve the cap and just say, okay, you know, let's just say I was in favor of the cap, and we said, all right, let's just limit to $15,000 and, and to see, you know, what he can get done in that time, timeframe. I just feel like it's going to be like, you know, you know, two months from now, we're going to be right back here again saying, well, we're, we're just, we're close, we're so close, we don't, why, we're going to need another this many hours? And then it's just going to keep, that's, it's going to keep happening, and pretty soon, it's going to be like, we're just going to keep throwing money at it, and pretty soon, it's going to be, you know, that's, that's my fear. I feel like we're opening a door here, and we're not basically holding a new person accountable to do his job, and instead, we're going to, we're relying on a crutch, which that crutch being Mr. Winkler.
You actually need to hold me accountable. I hold my directors accountable. So, and, and what I'm telling the councils, I need, need some assistance in getting these projects forward.
Can, can I make a comment?
Sure.
City manager, please. Vice Mayor Farmer, I, when I was appointed to the Parks and Rec director position, I had 25 years' experience under my belt with the city of Galt. It took me a minimum of nine months to understand what exactly this director had to do, and I had 25 years' experience. I'm sure if you ask Clarin, if you ask Cora, when you come in, they know HR, they know finance, but they don't know the city, and, and it's, it's very hard to come in and understand the job and then take on these new projects. I'm just trying to explain to you that it, it's not, you know, you, you seem to think that it's, should be up and running, and, you know, we interviewed him, I think he's a great candidate, I think he's going to do a great job. It's just a little more difficult than, than I think people think it is. And I just wanted to say that piece because it, it's not as easy as people think.
Well, I do value your opinion. On the same note, though, I knew you had 25 years with Galt, but you were, you know, with law enforcement, so it wasn't like you were 25 years as a Parks and Rec director and then came and worked as a park director. Am I correct? Okay. And you mentioned you've, you've, you've seen this person, but that's great. I mean, we don't, we don't even know, we don't know who he is. You know, we have a council up here, we're, we're putting full trust in our city manager to hire this guy who's going to be, you know, running one of the biggest departments in our city, probably the biggest department, the most important, and we don't know anything about this. We have no say in that at all. So you, 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 you understand our hesitation where, you know, you're, I got people like you saying, oh yeah, I met the guy, I've interviewed him. Well, that's great. We don't want to know anything about him.
And, and just the process is, is that I just hired a full-time person that city manager's never met, never knows, doesn't know who he is, doesn't know his name, but he trusts us as staff to make those decisions. And, you know, it, if, I think that's something that you need to do, and it's my opinion, I know I'm probably out of line, and I'm probably going to get a talk to tomorrow, but I, I really wanted to.
You know, I appreciate your opinion, Armando, and, and I, I thank you for giving it. I, I mean, it does, I take all this in and I weigh all the factors, and so thank you.
And, and one of the things that Steve and I talked about before we made the decision to retire is that I, one of the things I, I was hoping that he'd be able to do is finish the LNLs, because it's such an important part to the city. And he didn't get a chance to do that, and, you know, that was his decision, wasn't ours. I, we tried to talk him out of, I personally tried to talk him out of not going, because I wanted him to finish that project off, but, so.
I'd like to make a motion if it's possible.
Would you like to amend it, or?
Yeah, well, make an amendment to the resolution capping at the dollar amount to, of 16, $15,637 as set forth in the staff report. All other terms would, would remain the same.
Councilmember Campion, if you would be amenable to that also being, instead of a dollar cap, that it be an hours cap?
Or hours, whichever.
I would just need to confirm which.
Convert it to, convert it to hours, yeah.
Focuses more on the hours, the, the rate is capped, so that, that would equal around 200 hours, but we would figure that out. So I, I understand the direction, but. That was 205. I don't want to shorten. 205? Those five hours. So we have a motion? Okay. Not to exceed 205 hours?
205 hours.
Made by Councilmember Campion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Lozano? Roll call vote? Vice Mayor Farmer?
No.
Councilmember Sandu?
No.
Councilmember Campion?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Yes.
Mayor Lamson? Okay, I'm holding my city manager accountable and my finance director. And Mr. Clarkson, yes. So the motion passes, 3-0, 3-2, sorry, 3-2. Farmer Sandu against. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Good, good discussion.
I apologize for making a face when you said most important department, because, you know, there's a man packing over there. Okay. I'm getting back to my agenda, sorry.
I have a quick question, real quick. How long does it take for purrs to approve or consider for, for approval?
We're not sure, but a month, maybe more.
Um, it's pretty instantaneous, so as soon as the reso is passed, I just submit it online to Calpers, and they give me their approval.
Be a month, maybe more?
No.
No?
It should be probably within a week.
Oh, better.
All right, so we have any communication on this clerk?
We don't have any.
No communication? Do you have any report?
No report tonight.
Report? Comments by staff? Claire? Mr. Clarkson? Anything to report?
Yeah, something really quick. You know, we got some rainstorms coming up, and I'm just letting the, the public out there know that if you put it on Facebook, if you, if you leave it on a voice message, we may not get it for hours, you know, because we're not looking at it. But if you call Public Works, there's a little directory there tells you who to call if it's an emergency, and we'll, we'll, we can get on it really quick. So if you have anything going on out there, just let us know through Public Works, and it works a lot faster.
What's the number?
We should dance to that song, 366-7260.
So will the Galt app, you guys also on it on the Galt app?
Yes, yes, we, we have it there, but it's just, we don't always look at it. And, you know, and, and staff and stuff, you know, is gone at night and, and things like that, so.
I put a downed tree branch, and it was gone pretty fast.
Thank you.
And Mayor, they can also call Dispatch.
Okay.
And get ahold of them, and then we have the, all the numbers for Public Works for callouts after hours.
After hours, call PD, non-emergency number.
That's the teamwork, right there.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Cora? Who are you hiring?
We have Parks Worker One, plant maintenance mechanic, police officer. New is a police officer recruit position. A rec worker two ACES source program, we're now hiring for swim coaches, and also wastewater plant supervisor.
Thank you. Armando, you've been quiet this meeting.
I, with the retirement of Steve Winkler not making comments, they appointed me to take all this time. I have a couple of items. I have the Winter Bird Festival that's coming up on February 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Shabola Center. There's also tours that'll start earlier in that morning. You can register for those tours on our website. I'd like to acknowledge our key sponsors, which is Cal Waste, SMUD, Conservation Farms, and Consumnis River Preserve. Our keynote speaker will be Larry Broderick. And so I, I hope that you all can come out and enjoy that day. It's admission for free into the keynote speaker, into the speakers and to the, the vendor area, but there is a cost for the tours. Some of you guys may have noticed in some of your local parks and in the landscape areas that some of the trees look a little chopped up, little cut down. We're trying to take all the mistletoe out of the trees currently, trying to keep them healthy. We have some help from the California, there's a group that comes in that's providing us free labor, so we're taking advantage of that right now. And we have 10 workers that we're taking out with us into the parks and doing some of those cleanup things that we normally don't have time to do. We purposely cut the trees that way to cut the mistletoe out, so it doesn't look pretty, but we're hoping it'll come back in the springtime. I also wanted to go over something that's kind of hit Facebook a little bit lately. We close our parks down during the rain and a few days after the rain. What we do is we evaluate the parks to determine if they're playable, usable, and that includes walker, veterans, sports complex. And it could be sunny for two or three days, but after three days like we're having with the rain, the, the ground is still mushy. We have clay here, and it just doesn't dry up, it just stays up on, on the surface. So even though it's been sunny for three days, we still keep the park closed because it would cause damage with all the weight, the moving, the tearing, and that, that also includes our dog park. You have some of those 100, 100-pound dogs that go out there and tear it up, and what will happen is that they'll, they'll cause so much damage that we'll have to close the park down for weeks at a time to let it repair. So what we do is to close it down for a week, two, three days, a minimal amount of time, trying to keep our parks healthy. There's a field condition line out there, it's 209-366-7190. It's updated every day by noon. They can call to see if their park is open. And so I just wanted to make you aware of it, that, you know, there were some things going around on Facebook, but we, we close the parks when we have to, not because we want to, and we're trying to preserve the parks for everybody's use all around, year round, so.
So you're talking about just the parks that have fences that you can lock?
Uh, yeah, pretty, a lot of our sports fields, and then the dog park is included in there, the skate park's included in there, so.
Could we do a Facebook post to that effect? Is your park closed? And maybe just explain to them why?
Yeah, actually, I had talked to Gene, and he had, he had advised me to put it in the bi-weekly. Unfortunately, I missed that time, I'd already submitted everything, so I'll, I'll be putting, I'll be working with them to put it out again.
Yeah, let's get it to the Facebook. So, I know, you don't, you're good?
Yeah.
I appreciate the mistletoe, because it bugs me when I see mistletoe in trees. All right, we, I believe we have something to report.
From the largest, most important department in the city?
Yes.
Yes. Couple things. So I represented you Mayor Lamson on January 10th at the Criminal Justice Cabinet Committee, but there's nothing to report on that committee there. Today, we had Officer Kevin Ton's 60th anniversary memorial, and despite the rain, we had huge crowds. I want to thank everybody in the council that were out there and city staff. But a couple of specific people I want to thank. First, the Tons. Their energy is, is second to none, and throughout the state of California and some of the other neighboring states, whenever there's a fallen officer, they're the first ones to go out to their aid, their fallen families, and they're, they're just incredible people. Our honor guard, standing out there in the rain, doing what they do, they, they're high value to me as the police chief, but they represent our city well throughout the state and for any fallen, any formal event, and for today also. And then finally, I want to thank Mark Clarkson and all of his people. The, the ground conditions were extremely muddy, and the location at F and Third where Kevin was murdered, and so without me asking, on his own, he and his crew went out and put down some surface rock to help, so people weren't traipsing around in the mud. It was, it is, is incredible what this community, what this city does to honor Kevin, and so, so Mark, you did it on your own, I did. I didn't ask you. I appreciate it. And everybody out there appreciated you and your crew for what you did. So, thank you. That's it.
Gene?
Mayor, I have one item. We have our strategic plan session scheduled for January 25th. And I was informed that Councilmember Sandu will not be able to make that date. We planned for, you know, an all-day session. You know, at this point, I'd really like to have a full council to attend the strategic plan and, you know, talk about these, you know, issues and items that, you know, you know, we continuously talk about. So, I'd like to get, you know, some additional dates out to the council. I talked with Juan Lopez, who's helping us facilitate our session, and he gave me a couple of dates in February, which are Fridays. Again, I was kind of focusing on Fridays. But if there's other days at work for the council, kind of wanted your, your direction on that and if you're concurrent.
I would be in favor of moving it because he's not going to be. Also, we mentioned at last meeting, we discussed, you know, we, there was a big thing about, Rich had talked about it, and we were, you know, we were big on, you know, getting public input on this. But yet, you know, we're having this thing on a weekday during the day, and it's like.
Like 8 to 3.
People are complaining online saying, well, we can't, who can show up to that? So.
Maybe I can chime in on that a little bit and, and kind of talk, you know, kind of big picture. We're kind of going through a process, and it's the council's strategic plan. And it's your time to kind of work with me and the directors and kind of, you know, that team building as well, you know, with, you know, some of those, you know, discussions on priorities. And once we start formatting that and kind of getting those ideas out there, I think part of that session should be a discussion of how do we, you know, kind of get input from the public. And I think, you know, this, you know, first, you know, session is, you know, the, the opportunity for the council to kind of start blending and molding, you know, with, you know, your ideas and, you know, listening to the directors and, and, you know, having those discussions. And then after that, you know, we can kind of start getting out and seeing, you know, what kind of input we talk about at the strategic plan session, you know, input, you know, with the community. So, I don't know that it's, you know, we schedule times and certainly want the people, the public to show up and, and, you know, kind of listen in and, and, you know, there'll be, you know, a section in the meeting to, you know, have, you know, public comment like we do at any council meeting. You know, but it's really, you know, the time for the council to work with, you know, me and the directors and really kind of, you know, address those issues.
Yeah, I understand that. But I also understand that the purpose of this is to kind of figure out which direction we want to take our city. And that city doesn't belong to just us, it belongs to the public. And there was a lot of people mentioning that we were kind of putting the cart before the horse, where we're going to formulate, you know, prioritize all that we want to do, and then we reach out to the public and the input. But maybe the input should come a little earlier than that. I mean, I don't know if it's just me thinking that or whatever, but.
I'm thinking public meetings after, but.
Yeah, but you, you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I, we just, we're talking about the direction of the city and, and, you know. But if I have to reach out to the public on my own, then I'll just do that, so, prior to that.
Definitely, we'd like all five council members.
I would like all five council members there, and of course, our directors. So, I guess pleasure of the council at, at this point, you know, try and reschedule. Is a Friday okay? Do you want to look at other times? You, you know, give me some, you know, direction at this point.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be in favor of, well, I think it's necessary to have all five there. And to Sean's point, I agree that we definitely want public input in this process. But one of the things that I'm going to value, I think, at least is the way I understood it from my conversation with Juan, was this is also our opportunity to help give the city manager some direction on what we want based on just kind of a, a global view. And then, as we start narrowing that down and the public gives us that input, then that's when we start narrowing that down. And so, I've reached out to the public for a year about things that they, the public wants. And so, and the city manager and I have talked, I don't know, ad nauseam, almost every, every, about twice a week, twice a month about it since December 4th. So, but I think this is a good opportunity for the five council members and the directors and everybody to get together and, and at least begin to, to roll out our expectations of the city manager.
Okay, well, I'll shoot for, you know, Friday in February. And I'll work with Ms. Saddles to get that, get that scheduled. Thank you.
That's all?
That's all.
All right. Counsel Kimberly. I do not have anything further. Thank you, thank you. All right.
I, I just have one thing. The chambers also having an event on February 1st at the Chabola Center in conjunction with the Winter Bird Festival. And so, it's a food and drink event.
Wine, beer, and food.
And I went last year, it was awesome. And so, we'll be going again this year, Pam and I, so.
Mr. Farmer, what did you, wait, also, for, for, sorry, I'll do it again. Want to remind you guys that if you would like to make nominations, now's the time to tell us so we can get it on the agenda.
Yeah, we already discussed having that, right? Did we not talk about?
Have your public safety correct.
Yeah, so, okay.
The Commission on Aging tonight, Mr. Ballier requested it be brought back, so.
Okay.
Who still needs to?
But I need direction from a city council member who would like to make an appointment.
We can, I can, we can, I did email that one to you, but if I have any additional, I still have a few to, I can email you beforehand, right? Okay. I just want to say that I attended the Kevin Ton thing today, it was really good. You know, it was, thank you to, to Mark and Public Works, that was very nice, that rock. Because I was thinking about that all day. I was like, it's going to be so muddy out there. And, you know, and I was, you know, wearing, you know, dress shoes. I'm like, well, you know, just have to go wash them off again. But the rock was a nice touch, so that was very nice from do that. And, you know, in light of all the stuff that's going on right now with, with all these, you know, especially like with Newman, who's another small city that's lost an officer in Davis, although they're bigger than us. But with all these, these police officers losing their lives, it made me kind of think back, you know, that, that we lost ours, you know, six years ago, and, and we're a small town. So, it just kind of shows you that, you know, it can happen anywhere. And, and, you know, that our, you know, that our PD are out there risking their lives every day for us. So, it's not just in LA, it can be, you know, small-town America. So, that was good. That we had such a good turnout today. People were out there, you know, even six years later, it was, it was awesome to see that many people come out. And then last, on the 150 celebration, look forward to that. Think it's exciting, and I've been involved with the historical site and the chamber, all kind of doing talks about that and looking forward to that meeting on the 22nd. If anybody in the public is watching and they want to attend to, you know, to kind of listen in, we're going to be looking to, to form some kind of official direction of what we want to do with that celebration. Look forward to somebody from the city showing up, and I think it's going to be great. A lot of exciting ideas being thrown around, so.
No comment, thank you.
Well, I know you attended the grand opening of the new mall. I did. I think almost every did, Mr. Platso and the chief. There was one other opening that we attended. Well, the new antique was, or one, there was one more. Velvet Creamy. That's right, business of the month, so we did that. Also, I attended the Kevin Ton thing. It's my sixth year attending that, so very amazed at the turnout in the pouring rain, just the sea of umbrellas. It was, it was heartwarming. His, it's very important to his family that we never forget. So, we appreciate that. Does anybody else want to appoint to the Aging Commission? Did you? You don't want to appoint anybody? Do you want to appoint anybody to the Aging Commission?
He won't be here February.
He won't be here February. Did you make an appointment? Okay, you just want to hold off, okay. I need a chart.